Welcome to the Thursday, April 22nd meeting of the Henrico County School Board. Board members, you have had the opportunity to review the agenda for today's meeting. Is there a motion to approve our meeting agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper, is there a second? Second. Seconded by Ms. Kinsella, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? The motion carries, the agenda is approved.
Thank you. We are now going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I am so pleased to announce that the pledge will be led today by some of our own preschool students who attend school here at Newbridge. So I am going to have Crystal Heffelbauer, our Newbridge Administrator, come forward to introduce our preschool students who are going to take the stage here in just a moment to lead us through the pledge, and when they do that, I'll have us all stand, they'll lead us in reciting the pledge, then we will remain standing to give them a round of applause, which will be followed by a moment of silence. All right, so please introduce our guests today.
Yes, our wonderful preschool students who are taking the floor include Asher Battle, Titus Shaler, Brooklyn Padmore, Eden DeAvalar, and Noel Jefferson.
Welcome, boys and girls. Welcome, boys and girls, and you know where our flag is here, and so we're all going to stand so we can join you in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. We will wait for you to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Boys and girls, thank you for leading us in the pledge, you did a wonderful job, we're going to give you a round of applause. We appreciate it. Now, if we would, please remain standing for a moment of silence, which may be used by those in attendance for personal reflection, prayer, or meditation. And that concludes our moment of silence, you may be seated, and again, thank you to our guests for leading us in the pledge today. You did a great job. All right, for the next item, I'm also pleased that while it's not an in-person performance, and I know we are all anxious to return to being able to see some more boys and girls joining us here for our meetings, but we will have a recording of the Deep Run High School Vocal Music Department with future Wildcats from Holman and Short Pump Middle Schools, under the direction of Amy L. Corey. So if you would, turn your attention to the screens for our performance highlight. And if you'll join me in a round of applause for our performers. That was quite a breathtaking and outstanding performance, and certainly, I can't think of a better way to usher back in our performances, our performance highlights, as part of this meeting, then with that performance that featured our Deep Run Wildcats, as well as students from Short Pump and Holman, so wonderful performance, we look forward to next month's feature. For the next item pursuant to Chapter 7, titled 22.1 of the Code of Virginia, I'm going to conduct the election of a new Chair of the School Board for the remainder of the calendar year 2021, until thereafter or until his or her successor is elected and qualified. Are there any nominations for the position of School Board Chair?
Dr. Cashwell, I would like to nominate Reverend Cooper.
Mrs. Shay's made a nomination for Reverend Cooper, are there any other nominations?
Dr. Cashwell, I have a nomination as well, I'd like to share a few words before sharing that nomination.
All right, I'll take your nomination.
I'm going to, again, just reiterate, I'm going to share a few words, and then I'm going to share the nomination that I have. Our potential, HCPS staff potential and students' potential, is worth cultivating when times are great and when times are devastating. I have life-changing, culture-shaping, even heaven-touching-earth type of influence. Just to be clear, or in other words, patience in spite of trouble, understanding those unspoken rules and unconscious behaviors, and shaping them into a desired state. And when I reference heaven-touching-earth type of influence, I'm clearly just stating my faith in God. I know that our staff talents and gifts long for affirming and developing, our communities' voices need to be heard, phone calls and emails should be responded to in timely manners, and the impact of all the positive actions and work, all the results of that, it should be known and it should be felt. HCPS is worth investing in, not only when times are great and wonderful, but in times of trouble too. HCPS is worth the investment. I know this because I am a product of HCPS, and there were times as a child, being a student in HCPS, when things were phenomenal, and there were times of trauma as well, for me as a child. However, the staff within our buildings loved me, nurtured me, and I sit here successful today governing those very schools. And the love that was in the buildings then, I won't say how many years ago, still resides within those buildings right now. The teachers, the counselors, the principals, the assistants, the maintenance, the clerks, the leadership teams, technology custodians, there's so many in our buildings working hard and sacrificing every day because they love these kids. And for the staffelty and families and students that are paying attention in this moment, I want to say that I am sorry, I am sorry that you've had to sacrifice so much. I want to say thank you, because we would not be here and shifted to this moment where we are right now, talking about the future without you. The advocacy that you did for yourselves, the advocacy that you did for others, even telling me what you expect and how you feel when you were disappointed and when you were delighted, I want you to know that I get it. I want us to move forward towards a better normal, I want us to be positive examples, learn together, cry together, celebrate together, and the ultimate thing is to win together. And we'll do that, we'll do that together with collective healing and intentional actions towards excellence, regardless of who's the chair. We're all going to work together moving forward. With that said, I, Alicia Atkins, make a motion to serve as Chair for Henrico County School Board.
Mrs. Atkins, I've taken nomination of yourself, Mrs. Atkins, for the Chair of the School Board, do I have any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, nominations are closed, and we will vote in order of the nominations that I received. So in reference to the first nomination made by Mrs. Shay, that Reverend Roscoe Cooper be Chair, is there a motion on the nomination of Roscoe Cooper for Chair?
So moved. So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? One opposed, and I don't believe there were any abstentions. I believe that motion has passed. I'm struggling to see the clerk. Correct, shall I take the next vote, then, given that nomination has passed? I'm checking with legal counsel.
No, the vote has already passed.
Okay, the motion has passed that Roscoe Cooper will serve as Chair of the School Board. All right, congratulations, Mr. Cooper, and I will now turn the meeting over to our new Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. The next item on the agenda is our closed session, a closed meeting for discussion and consideration of matters covered under Items A1 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia pertaining to, as amended, the assignment appointment, performance, salaries, disciplining, and release of contract for specific School Board employees. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Sellers, there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Mrs. Ogborne, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, we are now in closed session. Is there a motion to certify the closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Shay, is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Mrs. Ogborne, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the closed session has been certified. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you Chairman Cooper and members of the Board. For the first item, I am seeking the Board's approval of the appointment of administrative personnel.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of administrative personnel?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kinsella, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the administrative appointments are approved.
Thank you Chairman Cooper. The Board has just approved Karen Hughes, Education Specialist, K-5 Elementary Science and Teaching Learning and Innovation, Jenna Childress, Principal Crestview Elementary School, Herman Mizell, Principal Elko Middle School, Gary Marshall, Principal of the Henrico Virtual Learning Academy, Shannon Washington, Principal Highland Springs Elementary School, Brooke Thompson, Principal at Holiday Elementary School, Katie Taylor, Principal Johnson Elementary School, Jennifer Roden, Principal Cackley Elementary School, and I would like to note changes in assignment with Shawna Tolliver, serving beginning in July as Principal at Longdale Elementary School, and Donna Stavenport as Principal at Seven Pines Elementary School. Congratulations to our newest administrators, and we look forward to being able to introduce those individuals to our Board in person or in some other format in the near future. All right, for the next item, we have our Traditional Health and Safety Committee report from our School Health Committee, and Dr. Tighan's going to come forth to provide you that update and take any questions that you may have.
Good afternoon Chairman Cooper, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. I'll jump right in, as I know we have a long agenda today.
Can you lift the mic up, please? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
At the last two meetings of the Henrico County Public Schools Health Committee, the following topics were covered: reviewing the most recent data and comparing last week's student and teacher attendance data to the baseline, providing an update on the status of contact tracing and current case levels, sharing the status of vaccines for staff and students, and the potential of testing students at school, defining school volunteer guidelines, and finally revisiting the conversation about the use of playgrounds at the elementary level. Let's begin with a look at the most current core indicators, as well as the secondary criteria. On March 10th, the total number of new cases per 100,000 persons within the seven days was 116.3, just to take you back to the previous meeting, and the percentage of PCR tests that were positive during the seven days was 4.6%. Four weeks later, as of Wednesday of this week, two weeks past our recent holidays, the number of new cases per 100,000 persons has increased to 138.5, and the percent positivity is up to 5.2%. Thus, the community transmission level remains at the highest level. Those numbers, I will say, have been trending down for the last week or so. And as a reminder, the level of impact resulting from the secondary criteria are shown in this table above, and the secondary indicators are the transmission within school, student absenteeism, and staff capacity. While Mrs. Gilbert will discuss transmission within schools a little later in the presentation, the number of outbreaks since February 22nd were, as you may recall, two confirmed and two pending at the last meeting, and the number of outbreaks is now four. And so the two that were pending did convert to outbreaks, as we suspected at the last meeting, but there have not been any additional outbreaks. The attendance numbers for students learning in person last week were calculated and compared to the baseline set the week prior to the March 25th meeting. There are no significant differences. The average attendance rate for all students was at 92.3%, which is actually up 0.1%. We saw a slight decrease at elementary and increases at both middle and high schools. When looking at our staff capacity, on average, there were 2.3 teachers absent from each school each day last week. This is slightly up from the 2.1 average that was the baseline that was set at the March 25th meeting. But I'd also like to note that the ability to acquire substitutes remains high and has actually gone up slightly, thereby indicating that our staff capacity is still strong. Mrs. Gilbert will now provide a status report on contact tracing, vaccination efforts, and potential onsite COVID testing.
Chairman Cooper, members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell, good afternoon. We continue to see an increase in number of students testing positive for COVID-19. This trend associated with a decrease in positive adult cases appears to be related to our successful effort here in HCPS to offer and vaccinate approximately 75% of our workforce. Despite the student trend up, our prevention strategies have continued to hold the number of exposures to a lower number. Our contact tracing staff is now working closely with staff reporting their vaccination status to minimize the quarantine time if an exposure should occur. This is allowing an earlier return to work date. In addition, our students are now eligible at 16 years of age and over to receive their Pfizer vaccine. Once fully vaccinated, which is receiving the full vaccination and two weeks post your last shot, contact tracing and the school nurses will use the same guideline to get our vaccinated students back into instruction face-to-face more quickly. While there has been a short pause in the registration process at the end of last week, the VDH registration system became operational again on Tuesday of this week. Very happy faces around my office. As such, HCPS continues to offer newly hired staff the ability to be vaccinated. The volume of vaccinations has steadily declined, as most staff have either received the vaccination or declined to pass that opportunity to be vaccinated. In addition to staff, there has been an effort to communicate with students 16 years and over, with or without extenuating health issues now. As of this past week, we have opened up to all 16-year-olds, not just those with those chronic conditions. They are again eligible for the Pfizer vaccine. This is a change, as we said, from three weeks ago, when those individuals 16 and 17 had to have that underlying health condition to receive the vaccination. Our communications and community engagement team has worked to communicate this updated access for vaccination, as well as those criteria I just described. We would like to offer them a thanks for doing that. The VDH has also shared that anyone 16 or older can sign up at many local pharmacies to receive the vaccination, and this may be more convenient to some of our families since the mass immunization clinic is at the Richmond Raceway. The Virginia Department of Education is also offering school divisions the ability to test our students and/or staff for COVID-19 at the school. Testing at the school could help with early detection to prevent greater transmission. The Health Committee had a robust discussion around when to test, the accuracy of said testing being that these are rapid tests, and the areas of greatest need for testing. At this time, the group left the meeting with more questions than our current answers, and we are continuing to aggressively pursue that opportunity for our district. Members of the Committee are doing research, and will continue to do that and report back at our upcoming meeting. Dr. Tighan will now update our school district on volunteers for schools and our playground
As we know, school volunteers play a significant role in many of our schools. A school volunteer is a parent, a family member, senior citizen, or community partner who chooses to donate time to support some aspect of the school experience. People who would like to volunteer must apply, be screened, and complete an orientation that includes school guidelines and safety protocols at the school. In keeping with our health plan, the volunteer program will be implemented in three tiers, beginning with Tier 1, with progression to other tiers upon guidance from the Health Committee and the Division Leadership Team. Volunteers will be required to complete a health screening, including a temperature check, before being allowed entry, as well as they must wear a multi-layered cloth covering and practice social distancing at all times. The principal and volunteer coordinator at the school will know which tier level the division is currently in, and it will be at the discretion of the principal to determine whether or not the school will implement that tier level. Tier 1, just to define each tier, the volunteers may work outside. Tier 2, in addition to working outside, volunteers may make copies or work at the front desk, sitting or standing, at least six feet from others. Volunteers will not be permitted to work in classrooms, the cafeteria, or gym. This also includes any volunteering after instructional hours. For Tier 3, volunteers may volunteer- For Tier Three, volunteers may volunteer in the classrooms, cafeteria, and gym. They may work in proximity to students and staff, as long as they wear a mask and practice social distancing. While the preliminary work of the volunteer work group has been completed, the Health Committee needs to define the criteria of moving from Tier One, where we are now, to Tier Two and then Tier Three. This work is slated for Monday's Health Committee meeting, and once defined, this information will be shared with the leadership team for consideration. And lastly, I would like to circle back to the question asked at the March 25th School Board meeting concerning the use of playground structures at the elementary school level. The leadership team reviewed the request, and the Health Committee then reviewed the current CDC recommendations for playgrounds. That CDC recommendation for playgrounds is, if playground equipment must be used, it requires normal routine cleaning, including high-touch surfaces made of plastic or metal, such as grab bars, play structures, and railings. After much discussion, it has been decided the elementary playgrounds can be used by our students. It is the discretion of the principal to determine the cleaning of the equipment and structures, what that schedule is, and the administrators can use their discretion for using volunteers outside the building or having staff complete those routine processes. And the Health Committee continues to meet weekly to review not only data but practices and have the conversations around transitions. As more and more data becomes available, the recommended actions are likely to shift, and having key members from the Virginia Department of Health at these weekly Health Committee meetings helps us stay or adjust our course as we continue to put our safety of staff and students a top priority. And Ms. Gilbert and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, as always, Dr. Tygen, for your report, as well as Ms. Gilbert for your hard work. Ms. Atkins, do you have anything?
I do, thank you. Could we please share the vacancies that we have, if you have that number readily available?
Yes.
For clinical aides, et cetera.
Ms. Atkins, I currently have two open nursing positions with two anticipated retirements for school year 21 and 22, and I have 19 clinic aide positions open.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Agburn?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Thank you, Michele.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. So, Dr. Tygen, you know my typical question at every meeting, and I think you already answered it in the presentation, but my typical question is, how many transmissions have we have or outbreaks? And so, that's now four confirmed, correct?
Yes.
And then, the follow-up is, where in our schools are these occurring? And if I remember from the last board meeting, it was three on school buses and one from classroom. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, Michele, that is correct. We also have three pending cases out there now, as of today, and that's new information from the Health Department meeting this morning. One, I am unclear at this point what that is, just because I got that information late to this meeting. The other two will be an additional bus case, or so transportation, and then sports-related.
You know, I think this is, I appreciate y'all humoring my, asking this question at every single meeting, but I think it's so important because it really does illustrate how effective our mitigation strategies are in the building and in the classrooms.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I think that's an important part of this story to continue to tell, not just looking at cases and quarantine numbers, but the transmission in our schools, and the fact is that it's very, very, very low. And then, I just want to take a moment, actually, to thank all of our families who, over spring break, engaged in safe practices and engaged in safe practices when they returned, so that while we did see a little bit of an increase, we didn't see a huge spike in cases. And then, lastly, a question about the testing of students and staff. So, I know you said you left with more questions than you entered with, so this may be something that's still pending, but just from my understanding, are we looking more to utilize these rapid tests at school for suspected cases, or more like some of the higher education institutions did with random testing?
So, those are, both are the options out there, one of which is screening. So, a particular lot of students or employees would be repeatedly tested over a period of time, four to eight weeks, so that you consistently get results and can see that that person or that group of individuals is continuing to be negative. That would be something like your sports arenas, which we've seen in our college, as well as our professional venues. The other one is to use, as you said, in the illness or symptom category, so potentially for our students or even staff who present with COVID-like symptoms while they're at school.
Let me put a qualifier in there, though, too. We have to have parental permission-
Yes.
...to be able to test students.
Yeah, that was going to be my other question.
Don't want any parent thinking we're just going to randomly test their students.
Exactly. So, and parental consent would be one of those questions that we came away with, that we're working through, to make a presentation back to the Health Committee.
Perfect. That's what Dr. Tygen said is where I was headed, just to ensure that we make sure that we have parental consent and that we're all working together as a team. So, I appreciate that. Keep up the really great work, hard work, vaccinating and mitigating and getting us through it. So, thank you both.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Michele. Ms. Consella.
Yes, thank you. I just have, I've been hearing from folks in terms of the student vaccination, and who will make the decision as to whether or not the vaccination for students will be required? Who makes that decision, Dr. Tygen?
I would say that would be, all other vaccines, it's a state-level decision, it's in state code.
Okay.
So, that's not a decision that we would make as a system.
So, just to repeat that, your school board and division leadership do not make that decision? Thank you very much for that. And then, if you could, please clarify for me, did you say that the three-tier volunteer system may or may not be implemented at a school based on principal discretion, or that it was principal discretion as to how it was implemented?
It's principal discretion on whether they can accept volunteers in certain situations. So, we may be in Tier Two, but a principal may indicate that that's in non-student spaces, and they may say that with the proximity in the office area or places they would work, that they can't accept additional volunteers because they would not be social distancing. And so, there could be reasons why, but it's-
So, principal discretion, just like in other buildings where capacity-
Yes.
-where we may have a larger number of students in a building, that kind of example. So, that's the kind of principal discretion we're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It may, similar guidance, but it may look different across schools just because of feasibility in certain schools?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Consella. Again, thank you all for the data and for the presentation. Dr. Cashwell?
All right. Thanks again to our Health Committee. The next presentation I have for the board is an update on our Destination 2025 Plan for Henrico County Public Schools. As I've shared before, the board can expect to get periodic updates related to certain goals, not the entire plan all at once. So, what you'll see today, as Dr. Hinton and staff come forward, is just an update related to certain goals, and will continue on a regular basis to get through all of the goals so that we're updated on progress of the school division's work in attaining our strategic plan goals. So, Dr. Hinton, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. In January, the board approved revisions to the 2018-25 Strategic Plan, also known as Destination 2025, the Plan for HCPS. The approved revisions include combining strategic goals to narrow the division's focus, creating an equity focus to each goal, adding and combining and removing implementation drivers, and adding tools to measure our progress. The full plan, as well as a brief one-page overview of the strategic plan goals and their alignment to the HCPS cornerstones and equity areas of focus, are now available on the HCPS website. This help informs the community of our priorities as the plan is implemented. Additionally, opportunities to engage with the community to gather input on how the school division can best achieve our goals are being provided directly from the school board. Virtual listening sessions are being held to provide families, students, staff, and community members with an opportunity to voice their thoughts around three of the division's cornerstones and one or more of our strategic goals. The first session was held on March 24th with a focus on equity and opportunity, and the next session will be held on April 27th, focusing on how HCPS can cultivate and maintain meaningful collaborative partnerships. Feedback shared at each session will guide staff and the school board in implementing the next steps of our plan. Each strategic goal has multiple key performance metrics identified that will measure the division's progress towards achieving that goal. One metric used consistently throughout the plan is data collected through our HCPS surveys. In March, surveys were available for grade five through 12 students, all staff, and families. Surveys are structured to gather perceptions from the HCPS community on each cornerstone and questions aligned with the implementation drivers of the plan. The surveys are supported in partnership with the Metropolitan Educational Research Consortium in the School of Education at Virginia Commonwealth University. Survey results are in the process of being compiled and analyzed and will be available in June. Work on each implementation driver in the plan is underway, and in the plan, there are target completion dates for each driver. Target completion dates are internal timelines set to assist staff with managing each action needed to achieve the goals. However, we know that once the structures and processes are implemented, the work will continue to be ongoing and embedded within the operations of the school division. So, just because something is completed doesn't mean that it's no longer a priority. In the plan, there are four implementation drivers with a target completion date of 2020. These four drivers support the goals of cultivating and maintaining collaborative partnerships and leveraging our strength of diversity. A comprehensive presentation on the Equity Leadership Framework will be provided in June. So, now, I will turn the presentation over to Ms. Adrienne Cole Johnson, Director of Family and Community Engagement, and Dr. Monica Mans, Chief Equity Diversity and Opportunity Officer, to provide an update on the other three drivers listed.
Thank you, Tiffany, and good afternoon, Chair Cooper, school board members, and Dr. Cashwell. HCPS continues to explore the full-service community school model as an approach for whole-child and whole-school supports. To affirm our commitment to this model, HCPS is currently participating in a strategic planning process as we redefine the structure of our CLC sites and explore the possibility of full-service community schools within Henrico County. This process has been informed by various voices and perspectives at some of our current CLC sites and is centered by our Engagement Planning Committee. A special thank you to our anchor partner in this process, Henrico Education Foundation, for funding this strategic planning opportunity. This process began January of this year and will continue through June. My goal is to report back to the board shortly after. Knowing that it takes the effort and action of various and diverse stakeholders, community schools are built on four pillars. These pillars guide us to integrate student support, lead in collaboration, expand and bridge learning, and engage families and communities. Considering these four pillars of the community school approach, the 21st Century Community Learning Centers, our CLCs, were repositioned to the Family and Community Engagement Department. This repositioning took place September of 2020 and is showing great alignment with the FACE philosophy and team. Overall, HCPS is enhancing the number and depth of partnerships and collaborations to best support students and families. These partnerships exist across various divisions and departments, an effort to best connect strengths and skills to needs and opportunities. And now, Dr. Mans will provide updates on the remaining drivers.
Thank you, Adrienne. Good afternoon, Dr. Cashwell, Chair Cooper, and school board members. On the district level, we have sought to engage in ongoing discourse about the policies and protocols that perpetuate inequities. The Policy and Constituency Service Specialist put in place policy and protocol review process that includes diverse stakeholders. The stakeholders include, but are not limited to, school board members, program leads, school leaders, Chief Equity and Diversity Opportunity Officer, parents, and other stakeholders directly impacted by the policy or protocol being reviewed. In addition, a set of equity policy review questions were formulated that provides an equity lens for the policy/protocol review process. Since beginning this formal review process, 312 policies have been reviewed and, when necessary, updated, to include Chapters 2, 6, and 8 of the District Policy Manual. Our office and our school-based, our office supports school-based equity teams with the overarching goal of growing the internal capacity to address, of schools, to address the inequities and promote an overall school culture of belonging. In partnership with Brooke Thompson, a specialist from the Department of Professional Learning, we have redesigned Coalition to become an elementary equity coalition focused on supporting schools as they work to develop a culture of belonging in schools focused on combating bullying and harassment. This coalition is a cohort of educators from each elementary school that participates in professional learning opportunities focused on equity and culturally responsive education in the classroom using the culturally responsive education model framework. We highlight practices that promote social-emotional learning, best practices to counter bullying and harassment. Coalition participants are provided a deliverable for each meeting to share with the staff at their school so that all elementary educators have the opportunity to grow in their understanding of equity and culturally responsive education practices. In partnership with Kerrigan O'Neal, a specialist from the Department of Professional Learning, we have worked with secondary schools to formulate equity teams. These teams are the driving force for ensuring equitable access, equitable opportunities for enrichment, and inclusion for all students at the secondary level. During the summer and each semester, we provide professional development and support on establishing school-based teams that are versed in the intersection of race, class, and public education, who can engage in meaningful dialogue and problem-solving. The school-based equity teams work to identify opportunity gaps and develop action plans to address these gaps, thereby fostering a sense of belonging for students, enhancing how the family experiences schools, improving academic and behavioral outcomes for all students. In support of this work, an Equity Team Manual was designed to guide school-based equity teams, and this summer, it will be expanded to provide support for equity team coalitions. Over the last several years, these efforts have been supported by the Henrico Education Equity Initiative Grant through the Virginia Center for Inclusive Schools and Communities. And now, Dr. Hinton will conclude our presentation.
So, at this time, that concludes our update. Our next update on the progress of the plan will be in August, and at that time, we will be providing data on the key performance metrics to track our progress towards our goals and plan for any needed revisions. And at this time, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hinton. Ms. Consella?
Yes, I just want to thank everyone for that presentation. I don't think there's a more important presentation, really, that we could do, because the strategic plan guides everything that we do, and it's, it guides all the work, all the outcomes, and keeps us on focus and makes sure that we're doing the work that we should be doing. I can attest to the policies that have been reviewed, as I said, on the Policy Committee with Mrs. Agburn, and I just want to thank the superintendent for her commitment to reviewing every single policy that we have, to ensure that it is updated and equitable, and supports and represents exactly what we believe and stand for, and exactly how it should be executed in each of our buildings as we go over regulations as well. I just want to say thank you for being so responsive to the students, because in this presentation, I cannot wait until June to receive the Student Advisory Committee update, where it says, "Develop and Implement an Equity Leadership Framework." Dr. Cashwell, I know that we're supporting additional leadership opportunities for our students- students, but we're also going to have a Student Advisory Committee with you, are we not?
That's correct. A recent addition has been the formation of a student, of superintendent's student advisory. So you might be familiar, the superintendent has advisories for support staff, our principals, our teachers, and really excited to get student voice involved in that way as well. And so I think the more opportunities we have to build leadership for our students and to hear their voices directly, the better.
Thank you. And then Dr. Hinton, correct me if I'm wrong, are we getting our survey results, our annual climate survey results, back earlier this year? Something tells me in prior years, the board hasn't received this information until August.
So we work with the Metropolitan Educational Research Consortium there through VCU, and over the years, we've just gotten a lot more proficient at getting that together and pulled together. So we've talked with them and they're preparing for June.
Well, I'm excited about getting the survey results back in June so that we can incorporate a lot of the feedback into our plans for the fall. That's all I have. Thank you so much for the update.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Ms. Shay.
Thank you. I appreciate continued updates on the strategic plan. Like Ms. Consella said, it really drives everything we're doing, and so to continue to have updates is important. As we continue working with the strategic plan, I'll just echo some of the feedback from some of our students and community to find ways to make it more digestible. I know it uses a lot of ed jargon for all of us ed people, but you know, as we continue to make progress, to have it in such a way that's digestible for our community so they can understand all the great things we're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Shay. Ms. Ogbonn.
Quick question. If we could go back, I actually have two. In one earlier slide, you talked about full-service community school. So Adrienne, if you don't mind just expanding on that, I know we're going to get more information, but I'm just curious, what does that entail? Where are we different now? Just if you could, whatever you can tell us, because I know more is coming.
Absolutely, and I look forward to being in front of you all within a month or so. And so we currently have 21st Century CLC, our Community Learning Center sites, where yes, we have partners who are pouring into our students, and we have after-school programming. With the full-service community school model, there are onsite supports that are provided. So that's the kind of short, short answer. I know some work is, you know, happened in the past of kind of exploring what that looks like, and that's what we're working through during the strategic planning period.
Which I am so glad to see, especially in conjunction with the CLC model and our partnership with HEF, to possibly expand those and what's coming, I think will certainly meet the needs of students. But I did also want to echo Mrs. Consella's comment about the Policy Committee. One thing that I am so appreciative of is when we meet weekly, we have tackled a number of policies and this obviously ongoing work, but the fact that so many people that I'm looking at right now are partnering with us and, you know, we have a robust discussion and it comes with everybody bringing their unique experiences together to make this, I think, such a valuable amount of work, even though we thought in the beginning it wasn't going to take all that long, and it is now expanded and in depth. And so I just commend the Superintendent for getting that work done and spearheading it. But, but thank you. Dr. Manns, you sit on that, and we see all of y'all as part of it and making sure that we're having policy that meets the needs of our students, and it is great. But so thank y'all for that. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Ogbonn. Mrs. Atkins.
Thank you, Evan Cooper. You know, equity is, or addressing equity is one way to reduce barriers to get to equality. And looking at all of the different ways that we get there is important. So certainly, addressing equity helps us get there. Thank you for your work. I'm looking forward to learning more about the progress as well as the results of all of the actions. One question I do have is, as we are looking at policy and tying those or aligning those to the work that's been presented in the presentation, is there a timeline that we're using to get to where we want to be?
I can't speak to the actual timeline. I know that we prioritized where we were going to start and where we were going to finish, and so Sherri Gumpel, who serves in this, who oversees the policy process, she could probably get that to you. So let me just, I'd rather hold the conversation and get you the most accurate answer, Ms. Atkins, instead of saying it, but I do know that there's been, there's a prioritization of what we're going through first, second, and third for the process.
Yeah, it's important to understand what that priority looks like because that certainly impacts the timeline, but it also helps with understanding how we get to where we want to be. So I appreciate your answer, Dr. Manns, and I look forward to getting more information on that.
I want to redirect to Ms. Consella.
I'll just speak quickly and then possibly, Dr. Cashwell will have, will have more to add. Sherri Gumpel, as Dr. Manns just said, is our Policy Constituency Services Specialist, and she actually prioritizes the policies that we review based on, from what I can tell, new legislation and other feedback and priorities we hear about from, from the division. We have a spreadsheet that we follow that is assigned to DLT members and other specialists within the division with deadlines and so forth, but it is a spreadsheet that I'm sure we could share with you so that you could see how we prioritize the work. Dr. Cashwell?
And I see Dr. Tiggen stepping forward. We have lots to add about timelines, so it was a great question.
And I think it's really important to understand that the overarching process has been really trying to focus within chapters because chapters, as you heard, the chapters that have been completed, because chapters refer to specific topics, and when you start going through policies within a chapter, you can see where things overlap and it allows you to provide a more comprehensive review of policy. And so while every now and then we have things that come up because of laws that have been passed or new, you know, new legislation that we have to adjust for, we take care of that as well, but we're really trying to be more systemic in doing this review of policies.
Thank you, Dr. Tiggen, for that because when we're looking at this with the lens of all the, sort of the systemic things that have existed for a while, prioritization becomes key, becomes critical in understanding how we are moving forward, not in the current moment, but we want to be able, when we get into the future, to look back and see progression and not just actions. And so that's why I asked for that. So Mrs. Consella, thank you so much for sharing the spreadsheet, so if you could share that with me, and then along with the timeline that ties right into the work that you're doing, what that will do is give a, not only a broader picture of what we're doing right now, but also help define so that once we get into the future and look back, we can actually understand the impacts of the work that we're doing in a methodical way and in a more meaningful way. So very appreciative of that, and I look forward to that information. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. So, Dr. Hinton, quick question from me. So could you expound a little bit more, discuss rather, about how we are measuring the achievement of the stated objectives? Let me give you an example. If you go to Slide number five, the objective states, "Students will be empowered to advocate for themselves and others." Once the implementation drivers have been completed, what data points would be used to determine that HCPS students will be empowered to advocate for themselves and others? And how will we assess this, and is there a certain percentage of the over 50,000 students we have that we are targeting?
That's a great question. So if you look at, and you, if you look at the full plan, on the far right-hand column of that full plan document, you can see that we have established key performance metrics related to each of these areas. So under each goal and under, across from each target, objective, you can see that there are metrics that we're using to monitor our progress towards meeting those objectives. And the next step says that we're really working on, when we come back to you in August, to have those targets available as well as the data so we can really start tracking kind of, this is where we are and this is where we want to be by 2025. So that is a work in progress.
So we're going to establish the baseline and then determine, you know, where we are in regards to the stated goals and the objectives? Thank you for that. Quick question, my second one, in terms of funding, do you foresee any additional funding that would be needed to support any of the professional learning for the Elementary Equity Coalition support and Secretary Equity Team support? Dr. Manns?
Well, thank you for asking. To be honest-
Little louder.
Okay, so to be honest, right now it's availability. It's the amount of training that we're trying to do around so many other areas that has caused probably the most difficulty for us. And in reference to coaching, we're having to reduce the amount of coaching just because we have some limitations on my staff to get us to be able to do that. And so we're only providing a limited number of trainings now during the year. We were trying to provide actual coaching to the teams, but that just wasn't sustainable and we weren't able to do it with a level of fidelity. So now what we've decided to do is to provide some coaching throughout the year quarterly and then invite them to be, to come as they are available.
So you said, I'll just say yes, say that we do need some more money to be able to do more with the program?
It would be helpful, yes.
All right, I just want to know. Dr. Cash, you want to speak to that?
Absolutely, and we continue to make sure that we're eyeing our goals and any potential supports and resources we need, and I think Dr. Manns made a really excellent point when she started to talk a bit about some of the time that's involved with this work. So, you know, we could increase the number of folks being able to get out and coach this work, but I think, you know, we think about implementation, we can think about breadth and we can think about depth, and here we're going for depth, depth of understanding, and we want to make sure that our staff who are engaged in this work have an opportunity to work closely with the professional developers and that they have time to really implement and work towards understanding that at a deep level. And so sometimes, when you think of the size of our school division, if you go too wide, if you're, if you focus more on breadth than depth, something may be lost. I think it's balancing those two, those two things, making sure we have the number of some staff who can get out and support this coaching effort, but also doing it in a manner where we really can work towards deep implementation because that's where we'll see those experiences really change for our students in the classroom. Thank you, Dr. Manns.
Thank you, Dr. Manns. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. If there are no more questions, thank you, Dr. Hinton, Ms. Cole Johnson, and Dr. Manns for your presentation. Thank you so much. Madam Superintendent.
All right, and sort of without purposefully creating a segue here, a number of policies that I will be seeking the board's approval on to, to the point that's been made about the ongoing and comprehensive effort to review our policies. So at our last board meeting, I did share for review with the board a large number of policies, and now I am seeking your approval on those. And so the first policy for which I'm seeking your approval are proposed revisions to Policy
Board members, is there a motion to approve and propose revisions to Policy P6-03-001?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ogbonn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to Policy P6-03-006.
Board members, is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to Policy P6-03-006?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The policy has been approved.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of the proposed revisions to Policy P6-03-012.
Board members, is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to Policy P6-03-012?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Ogbonn and seconded by Mrs. Shay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The policy has been approved.
Thank you. Also seeking your approval of revisions to Policy P6-04-002.
Board members, is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to Policy P6-04-002?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you. Also seeking your approval of proposed revisions to Policy P6-04-006.
Board members, is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to Policy P6-04-006?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Ogbonn, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you. Also seeking your approval of proposed revisions to Policy P6-06.
Is there a motion to approve Policy P6-06?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. The motion is approved.
Thank you. Also seeking your approval of proposed revisions to Policy P6-06-007.
Madam Superintendent, in reviewing this policy, to remain consistent with the charges, changes, rather, I'm sorry, made in the other policies in term of, in terms of legal guardian should be used each time you reference parent under Section 2, Requirements and Procedures, Part B2, CD, E, and F, throughout the remainder of the document, legal guardian would need to be added.
We can certainly make that adjustment.
Anyone else have any provisions, revisions? All right, after my revision, is there a motion to approve the proposed revision policy P6-06-07? I'm sorry, P6-07.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm under the impression that if we make a change to this, it has to go back to the Policy Committee for change and bring, come back to us so that the correct language is approved as opposed to change at this point, or am I right?
I think we can certainly do it that way, Mrs. Ogbonn, and I'll leave it to the board. Legal has advised that we can go ahead and discuss if we all agree upon the change and vote it in here, as long as we are all clear on what the change is that you're voting for and we can make that adjustment.
But, but to your point, the words legal guardians, it's something we've discussed a lot as a team and have been trying to make sure that that is consistently a utilized term. So that would fit with, you know, really what the Policy Committee has been doing, but it may have been missed in this case.
If I may, doing a quick search of the document, it appears in the document on board docs that everywhere it says parents, it also says slash legal guardians. Reverend Cooper, is, is that what your suggestion is, or are you suggesting remove parent?
No, each time it's referenced, so I just want to be consistent, that term legal guardian is-
Well, I think if you look at the bolded information, that's what's been added. I just don't, what you're looking for is a strikeout or a change, and I think it already has been.
Okay, good. That's the whole point, just to make sure that we're consistent with that statement.
We will use the term both parent slash legal guardian consistently throughout the policies, and I think that's what's been intended here. And so if it's, if this board approves the policy revision as it's written and ensuring also that we've used the term parent slash legal guardian, is there support to approve the policy P6-06-007? So moved.
And second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Shay and seconded by Mrs. Ogbonn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The policy is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Also seeking to approve proposed revisions to Policy P6-07.
Is there a motion to approve Policy P6-07?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Mrs. Consella, seconded by Mrs. Shay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion is approved.
Thank you. Also seeking your approval of revisions to Policy P6-09-004.
Is there a motion to approve Policy P6-09-004?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Ogbonn, seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed have the same right. The ayes have it. The policy is approved.
Thank you. Also seeking your approval of proposed revisions to Policy P6-09-009.
Is there a motion to approve Policy P6-09-009?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. The policy has been approved.
Thank you. Also seeking your approval of proposed revisions to Policy P6-10-002.
Is there a motion to approve Policy P6-10-002?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Ogbonn, seconded by Ms. Consella. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The policy has been approved.
Thank you. Also seeking your approval for proposed revisions to Policy P6-11-002.
Is there a motion- Is there a motion to approve Policy P six dash eleven dash zero zero two?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Cancela, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. We're in the home stretch here. As you can see, when they said the Policy Committee had been actively at work, this was not an underestimation of the efforts. Also seeking your approval of proposed revisions to Policy P six dash thirteen dash zero zero five.
Is there a motion to approve Policy P six dash one three dash zero zero five?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogborne, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Also seeking your approval of proposed revisions to Policy P six dash eighteen dash zero one zero.
Is there a motion to approve Policy P six dash one eight dash zero one zero?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Cancela, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogborne, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the motion is approved.
Thank you. Seeking your approval of proposed revisions to Policy P ten dash zero seven dash zero zero one.
Is there a motion to approve the revisions to Policy P ten dash zero seven dash zero zero one?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Shea, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cancela, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Also seeking the board's approval of proposed revisions to Policy P ten dash zero eight dash zero zero five.
Is there a motion to approve Policy P ten dash zero eight dash zero zero five?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. And the next item for which I'm seeking your approval contains several policies which actually have no changes that have been recommended, but in keeping with our review process, I am asking the board to approve the policies with no changes as they are written, and that's Policy P six dash zero five dash zero zero one, as well as P six dash zero eight dash zero zero nine, P six dash zero nine dash zero zero six, P six dash zero nine dash zero one five, and P six ten dash zero zero three.
Is there a motion to approve the policies?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Ogborne, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the policies have been approved.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the board. The next few items related to policy are items where I'm bringing forth for your review, and will at a subsequent meeting be seeking your approval of the revisions, but want to have an opportunity in case you have any questions. And of course, these are posted for the public for the review period. The review to propose revisions of Policy P six dash zero four dash zero zero three. Are there any questions? Also bringing forth for your review, Policy P six dash zero five dash zero one three. Also for your review, proposed revisions coming forward for Policy P six dash zero eight dash zero zero one. Also for your review, proposed revisions to Policy P six dash twelve dash zero zero one.
And Dr. Cashwell, I do have a question on that particular policy and the change that's recommended. Can you explain why for distribution is being recommended to be removed?
And we are in the activities fee policy?
P six dash twelve dash zero zero one.
Yeah, okay. Well, just a second, I'm going to pull that up. I think this has to do with the fee schedule as far as distribution. I think perhaps it was redundant there in that it is publicly posted, as well as the principals having access to that fee. Does, I don't know, Dr. Tigan, do you have any additional insight on that one? So when we talk about copies and distribution, it's sort of referring to a hard copy document, and this is something that I think has moved in keeping with our practice, moving the policy to reflect our practice, which is that the digital distribution of that, as well as on the site, is that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The reason I ask that question is because we're aware that there are folks that may not have access, and so I think it's important that we consider those individuals as well. Just something to think about as the committee goes back and have those discussions, particularly the fee schedule is a big one. And so just want to put that on the radar to have discussion about.
Absolutely, and, and of course, as was this board's priority, we have removed a number of student fees, so that list has luckily gotten smaller, not larger, but when it comes to things like the lunch fee and things like that, once this board's adopted that, we'll make sure that we're communicating that in a variety of methods.
Well, and too, Mrs. Cancela and I can bring that back to the committee for fine tuning that wording about what sort of distribution, how do we get that material to students, probably should be included here, where would parents find it, that kind of thing. So we'll take that back for our discussion, and...
We're happy to bring it back Monday for the committee's review.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we've taken note of your question that we'll bring forward to the committee related to activity fees and the change there. Are there any questions related to Policy P six dash twelve dash zero zero two?
Dr. Cashwell, when I reviewed this, I didn't see any revisions.
I think there is a strike through on student conferences, parent conferences, I thought.
I might be on the wrong...
This is Activity Fund.
Activity Fund.
Oh, I am on the wrong one, sorry about that.
Even if there are no changes, we're approving...
It has to come forward.
Yeah, so it might be that's where there aren't any... Oh, wait, wait, here we go.
Yeah, I just, typically we say unchanged policies. Okay. Oh, it says no changes in the background information.
No changes are proposed to this policy, sorry.
My apologies.
Thank you. All right, any other questions related to this review? The next one, I was ahead of myself, the reporting student progress I was referring to, and there are changes. Any questions related to policy revisions that are being proposed to P seven dash zero nine dash zero zero two? All right, that takes us to the end of the road with policy review. The next item I have is I am seeking the school board's acceptance of the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Teacher Recruitment and Retention Incentive Program Grant Funding of $109,000 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Is there a motion to accept the STEM Teacher Recruitment and Retention Incentive Program Grant Award?
Absolutely, so moved.
Has been moved enthusiastically by Ms. Shea.
And second.
And seconded by Mrs. Ogborne, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the grant has been accepted.
Thank you. Also seeking this board's approval of acceptance of the increase in grant award funding of $23,097.62 for the Integrated English Literacy and Civics Education Program from the Virginia Department of Education. And that brings the total award amount to $148,340.62.
Is there a motion to accept the increase in grant award funding for the IELCE program?
Absolutely, so moved.
Mrs. Cancela has made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the grant has been accepted.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Moving on to our next item, I am pleased to be able to share this afternoon with the board an update on the planning efforts that are underway for Henrico's first virtual academy. And so I know we have a number of presenters eager to share this presentation with you, and so Mrs. Bostain is going to kick it off, and I will turn it over to her.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Courtney Bostain, Director of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation. With me this afternoon are Dr. Dia Champ, Director of Middle School Education, and Liz Parker, Director of School Counseling, Student Support, and Wellness. Together, we will introduce the initial plan and propose next steps for Henrico's Virtual Academy as we prepare for the start of the 21-22 school year. To begin, we will start with our why. The children and families of Henrico schools, who we know rely on us to take part in a quality educational program that will prepare them to be globally competitive citizens who are life-ready. And in Henrico, we articulate this life-ready vision in our Henrico learner profile. In addition to this profile, the strategic plan provides a roadmap of ongoing opportunities for continued success and growth. And as we focus on academic excellence, we remain committed to ensuring that all students have multiple pathways to college and career readiness, and opportunities to engage in rigorous learning experiences that best meet their unique learning styles. As we all know, life changed in unprecedented ways in March of 2020, and this transformation wasn't just a radical shift from where our students learn, but how they learned. We received feedback from stakeholders that shared both ongoing challenges, as well as areas of success. And while we learned that virtual learning isn't the optimal environment for every student, it is an environment where some of our learners are thriving. And as we continue to value equity and opportunity for every child in Henrico schools, we know that we must remain responsive to the needs of our students and families seeking a fully virtual alternative. To do this, a planning committee was formed that included representatives from all eight divisions of HCPS, as well as upcoming focus groups that will include input from students, families, and community members as we continue planning for next year. Throughout the project, we have embraced a "Together We Can" motto as swift preparations are being made to launch our new academy. Our presentation today will present the initial plan along with the intended next steps for any students and families interested in pursuing this fully virtual option. And while our update today is a start, we know that there are many elements that we will need to further define with our learning community as we prepare for the new school year. The new format of our school will be fully virtual. It will include a combination of synchronous and asynchronous learning opportunities. In synchronous learning, students will engage in learning at the same time as their peers, just like the traditional classroom, with their cameras on while utilizing a common background. In asynchronous learning, students will have the flexibility to participate in structured learning at their own pace. At this time, Dr. Dia Champ is going to share an overview of who can enroll in HVA.
Thank you, Mrs. Bostain, and good afternoon. Any learner who is a Henrico County resident is eligible to apply to the HVA. Henrico schools enrollment and residency policies and regulations will apply. Students interested in attending the HVA will complete a family self-reflection tool to determine if the HVA is a viable option for their family, after which they will complete the application process. It is our intent to make the application available early May 2021, and students and families opting into HVA are making a one-year commitment. Similarly to the experience in our traditional in-person school programming, the service delivery model for English learners, gifted learners, and special education students in the Henrico Virtual Academy may vary from what is provided in a brick and mortar school. Direct services will be provided by licensed personnel, and we want families to be aware of the service delivery models which are appropriate for a fully virtual academy before electing to pursue this option for their students. Additional guidance and information will be provided from central office representation, which will be included in the FAQs. Students who are accessing, accessing the Virginia Essentialized Standards of Learning and have previously been supported through integrated services, specialized programming will be provided through HVA. Now, Mrs. Liz Parker, Director of School Counseling, Student Support, and Wellness, will continue with the presentation.
The HVA will continue to empower all students who own their own journey and prepare for multiple post-secondary pathways by offering a variety of courses across all content areas. Students who attend the HVA will have the opportunity to select from an amended list of course offerings that will allow them to continue, continue pursuing their pathways of interest while working towards either the Applied Studies, Standard, or Advanced Studies diploma. At the elementary level, students will have access to the same courses as our in-person elementary learners. These include reading, math, science, social studies, library, art, music, and health and PE. At the secondary level, students will have rigorous and engaging options for English, math, science, and social studies, world languages, health and PE, fine arts, and CTE. Middle school students in the HVA on an accelerated path will have similar opportunities as their peers in the traditional setting to pursue high school credit-bearing coursework. Additionally, secondary course options at the HVA will include select honors and advanced placement courses across content areas. Interested HVA students will also still be able to participate in the specialty center application process. Accepted students who then choose to attend a specialty center, including the International Baccalaureate Program and the Gifted Young Scholars Academy, would enroll full-time, in-person, to the traditional school in which the program is zoned. However, juniors and seniors who are accepted to the Advanced Career Education Center, or ACE Center, will be able to complete their one and two-year skills-based courses in person at either Highland Springs or Hermitage ACE Centers, while also completing the remainder of their coursework virtually through the HVA. An addendum of the HCPS Planning Guide will be released prior to any application deadlines. For all of our course offerings, we will provide HVA students with access to the same high-quality, learner-centered curriculum that we provide for all of our students adapted for the virtual setting. As you know, our curriculum, whether virtual or in person, defines the what for teaching and learning, and ensures the vertical articulation of the knowledge, skills, and attributes students need to be life-ready. Beyond academics, HVA will remain committed to nurturing the whole child and ensuring students receive opportunities to develop cognitively, physically, socially, and emotionally. This will be embedded in the school's vision, mission, and core values, which will be developed through a collaborative process led by the school principal. We plan to provide activities and opportunities to engage the HVA families in meaningful ways. We are excited about collaborating with the school community to begin building a strong school culture for the HVA. Just as important is ensuring that students in the HVA are able to participate in co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Students interested in participating in middle school athletics, as well as Virginia High School League activities and athletics, will be able to do so in person through their zoned school. Other activities and clubs will be made available to students through the HVA itself. Additionally, students will have access to a variety of student support and wellness services, such as school counseling, school psychological services, school social work services, behavior support, and extended learning opportunities. Staffing the virtual academy will be key. Based on our last year of experience, similar to how some students are thriving in the virtual setting, many of our teachers have found virtual learning to be an ideal fit for their skill set. Each elementary school student will be assigned to a highly qualified grade-level HVA teacher who will provide instruction in all core content areas, as well as highly qualified LAMP teachers who will provide instruction in the areas of library, art, music, and health and PE. Teachers will communicate regularly with families and will work to differentiate instruction and provide a variety of strategies and interventions to support all learners, which may include online remediation sessions after school. Secondary students will be assigned to a highly qualified... Secondary students will be assigned to a highly qualified, subject-specific teacher for each of their courses. In addition to differentiated instruction, secondary HVA teachers may provide online tutoring sessions, conduct office hours, and communicate with students and families regularly. Teaching positions for the HVA will be posted soon, and any qualified teacher may apply. We look forward to engaging in this process in the coming weeks. The HVA will incorporate best practices for virtual teaching and learning, and once selected, HVA teachers will receive targeted support designed to help meet the unique needs, challenges, and opportunities that come with a fully virtual environment. As plans continue and more information becomes available, the Planning Committee will work with the Division of Communications and Community Engagement to prepare equitable communication across our entire learning community. This will include language and multiple -- this will include communication in multiple languages and opportunities for our learners and their families to ask questions before applying to the HVA. And now Courtney Bostain will provide an overview of our next steps.
In summary, as we prepare to provide learners and families with this additional option for the upcoming school year, we will commit to: communicating the HVA opportunity to all Henrico stakeholders; providing students and families with an FAQ that includes a self-reflection tool to help identify if HVA is the right fit for their learning needs; engaging in an open application window, providing time for families to decide if they want to pursue the HVA for the upcoming school year; identifying students for year one; and posting the necessary teach-in positions; and creating a healthy school community with a connected school culture, supported by the staff, students, and families, all as we prepare to provide a memorable experience and first day of school on September 8, 2021. And as we shared at the beginning of our presentation today, this is simply the start. We know that plans will continue to evolve and adapt based on the needs of the very reason we're designing this opportunity: the children and families of Henrico County Public Schools. We look forward to continuing this important work, and we would like to thank you and members of our Planning Committee and Task Force for their continued support. This concludes our introduction to the Henrico Virtual Academy, and at this time, we will receive any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bostain. Ms. Atkins, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper, and thank you so much for this presentation. I'm thankful for the creation of the HVA and the opportunity to offer quality options for families that want their children to learn in this way. I do want to know if you have had discussions around nutrition and how will breakfast and lunch be handled?
Great question. That is a part of our Planning Committee work, and it is in the list for us to talk about meals with our school nutrition services. So as I shared in the slide earlier, the Planning Committee includes our representatives from each division, and that is a meeting item for the Task Force. So we look forward to updating you on specifics around meals and nutrition services in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Also, for students in ACA, will they be a part of or have the opportunity to be a part of HVA?
So yes, that would fall under our specialty centers, and so yes, those students can certainly apply, like all students can, and then once accepted, they would actually then attend that specialty center in person and enroll in person in the schools in which the ACA is delivered.
So that collaborative effort with J. Sargent Reynolds and Henrico County Public Schools, we have confirmed that those students can attend virtual. I want to make sure I understand that.
I think, no. Yeah, so I think what was shared related to specialty centers was that our students who would be entering the application process, so if you've attended elementary school or middle school in the Henrico Virtual Academy, you're still eligible to apply for a specialty center. But the unique programming in, let's say, ACA or our IB program, working towards that IB diploma, some of the particular programming specialized in a number of our centers would only be available at that center. So there was a slide that talked about the offerings at secondary, and so it is a robust offering, and it does include some CTE, but, you know, certainly, we're going to work to make sure that we have a variety of options for students who choose this, but it does not replace every single specialty center option. I think that's a really good question, and so I hope that made that clear.
You did, thank you. And it's important to understand those that, you know, may not fit into this piece, for those that are listening, I want to make sure they're clear that it's not all
Absolutely.
All one-shot specialty centers. That's important to say. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell.
Yeah, doesn't replicate the specialty center programming itself, and so, but that doesn't mean that within the specialty center at ACA or any of our other programs, there isn't potentially a digital component or a growing component to leverage virtual at times, but as far as Henrico Virtual Academy enrollment, that is separate from the specialty centers.
Wonderful. Thank you for explaining that. Also, in one of the slides, we talked about special education teleservices model. I'm interested in learning a little bit more about that model and what plans would be in place for nonverbal students or, let's say, the students that don't have that voice output device?
Sorry, I had to make the journey up. I'm so glad that you asked that because that's been at the forefront of our decision-making. We want our Virtual Academy to be accessible to all of our students who are interested in this as a form of education. If students require assistive technology, things like those communication devices you spoke about, of course, we would work with them to provide either a Henrico device or support them in their use of their own personal devices. We've had tremendous success with our speech pathologists and our occupational therapists who have been providing virtual teleservices throughout the pandemic and then this year as we've dealt with COVID. The interesting thing about the Virtual Academy is that we don't know which students are going to be there yet, so we don't necessarily know what their needs are going to be yet, but our commitment is that as we see students who are interested and who truly believe that this is the best fit for them, that we'll do what we have to to make sure that it's accessible.
Yeah, I've received some questions about specifically around special education, and so I'm glad to hear that you're engaging in those questions because in trying to decide if you're going to either even apply, you want to make sure that those devices, that's just one example, of course, but in thinking about sending your child, you want to know that those options are available, so I appreciate your response to that.
And Ms. Atkins, I do believe that that self-assessment that parents and families will be invited to participate in will really help them in that decision-making as to whether or not this is the best option for their student when it comes to access. So thank you for asking this question.
Absolutely. Stay right there for one more moment. I don't want you to have to keep walking back so far. The assessment tool, is there a paper copy of that tool or is that all online?
That is not a me question, so I'm going to step away.
We are currently working with our communications department and working through our communication tool as well as that self-assessment, and we are going to make sure that it's in multiple formats so that all families do have access to that information.
Great, thank you. Let's see here. And about the application process, I know you are still in discussion about the application process itself, but some of the feedback I've been hearing in many of the presentations or conversations is the word "limited" and understanding what does that really mean? I don't expect an answer, but I'm hopeful that in mentioning that to you, that you're having conversations about what exactly "limited" means, if that's based off of staff, which is what I am thinking, but that may not match what you're thinking as well when we say "limited." So as you continue to explore and finalize plans, let's be sure with the words that we're using that we explain exactly what "limited" means specifically around the application process. So I look forward to learning a lot more. So thank you again. Reverend Cooper, that ends my question.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogren?
Thank you. We have often said during the pandemic that we're operating two school systems, so we're going to continue to do that, and you know, when you look for the silver linings, this is one of them. I mean, I don't know that we would have gotten to this place at this point without that. So, I mean, to me, this is exciting. It goes forward to meet needs of all kids because we have all heard from some parents who have said that "virtual learning works for my child." So providing for needs of children, which is what we're all about, seems to me that we're continuing that, we're growing that. I'm excited to see that, especially in a variety of learning environments, which y'all hit on so well. I think that you don't want to just imagine a child sitting in front of a computer six hours a day, which is obviously not going to be the case. And so knowing that there's going to be a variety, I think, is so important. But we are also, to me, one of the positives is that there are students who have left Henrico looking for this resource elsewhere. They're Henrico citizens. They've had to go find it. They've left us. We're going to hopefully get them back, and we're going to be able to meet the needs of those children that heretofore, for whatever reason, we weren't able to. So I think that's great for the citizens of Henrico, but it's also listening to the feedback from parents that have been asking for this. The one thing I do want to know is you talked about extracurriculars, and I know this is going to be a question that comes up pretty soon, is how will those kids be able to participate in the extracurriculars? How will that work? I think in order to be a well-rounded child, you need that option, and you said your connected school culture, which I think is such an important term in your presentation, but explain to me more, how will that happen?
Sure, it's excellent question. So we know this is at the forefront of the minds of many of our students and parents, and so students at the HVA are able to participate in middle school athletics as well as all Virginia High School League athletics and activities through their zoned school, and so they would be doing that in person at their zoned school. The HVA itself will then have additional extracurricular and co-curricular clubs and activities for students to participate within the HVA itself.
So would students have the option of, like, for a club, for example, going to school in person for that club, or there might be a virtual club as well and activities that, sorry, that those kids could participate in? They would have that choice?
They will have a choice. There are certain specific VHSL activities and athletics that have to be done in person at the home school. But then the goal is for the HVA to then create a whole lot of additional opportunities for students to continue to engage.
Right, I got it. And I'm going to just want to add one piece to that. I think your answer was comprehensive and hit the nail on the head, but I do want to just note that students who would be enrolled in HVA, who would want to participate in VHSL, would need to meet VHSL requirements for participation. So that's a given. I just don't want to make any assumptions that you would be able to participate just by virtue of being in HVA. You also have to meet all the other requirements, and so, yeah, and I think as was stated, knowing that, you know, with HVA will come that school feeling of school community and culture, which means a robust offering of extracurriculars that are probably based on student desires and needs. Students themselves may be a part of generating various virtual clubs and so on, just like we see happen in any comprehensive school.
Yeah, I think that's amazing. But to me, that, you know, being able to provide this opportunity across the county to any student who's interested, it's going to be very interesting to see how long the list is, and I'm hoping we don't have to turn kids away. But the one thing I would hope to see is that, obviously, this is a new initiative. I hope that we will be obtaining frequent feedback from the student, staff, and teachers as we go forward because, obviously, anything new, we're going to work out the kinks in the beginning and then make improvements as we need to. But so how do you plan to get that feedback? You're all shaking your heads some, so I assume you're doing it, but you must have a plan on how that feedback will be done.
Well, as Ms. Bostain said earlier, we are going to start with focus groups. That's, we're starting that next week, in which we're getting feedback from multiple stakeholders, and then also, we just hired our principal, who's going to be actively involved in this process, who can also put together task force once we have the students and staff and so forth so that we can receive that frequent communication, because as we know, we may be missing something, and we are going to be missing something. So we can tweak plans as the year progresses.
Now, well, this, have a special advisory committee or parent committee? Have you envisioned something along those lines that, as far as a group that meets frequently or anything like that?
I believe we're going to have a multitude of opportunities for that, Ms. Ogren, and we're going to need it. We see this as a collective effort and a partnership, and as Dr. Champ shared, the principal is going to be a key component of starting that connection, not only with the HVA community, but communities across our school system, because we know families may elect into this option this year or may not elect into this option this year. They may be considered in the future, and so that's something we want to stay in touch with, and you bring up a good point, and that is something, as soon as we welcome that principal, we're going to quickly start to establish beyond
Absolutely.
...our global focus groups.
Right, literally hit the ground running, getting this going, but I think it's exciting news, and it really does meet the needs of students that I think will, you know, I've heard from them, so many students who need this and want it. So I'm excited that we're moving forward, especially in as quickly as we are, so that's great. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm finished.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogren. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. It is wonderful to see all of y'all back at the podium. Thank you for bringing this forward to us today. Can you articulate for us how this standalone academy improves on the structure we had this year in which virtual was interwoven with the home school?
Another excellent question, and I think, as you alluded to, Ms. Shea, you see diverse representatives here as on our Planning Committee, and our school principals and leadership teams have been key, and also with our families and communities in providing that feedback. And we know that as we continue to make preparations for HVA to launch in September, we must review that data and the overall experience, where I think we have about nine weeks to go. So as we continue to round out this unprecedented academic year, taking the feedback in our students, their feedback will be a key component of the data that we use to inform what adjustments we need to make to the virtual space in the Henrico Virtual Academy.
And by having a standalone--
I just want, I think that's an excellent answer. I wanted to add one point to your excellent question, Mrs. Shea, and I think predominantly we see a hybrid model being currently used, and so, you know, while it's incredible, the job our schools and our teachers have done in providing an excellent experience that balances the needs of the in-person and the virtual learners, often simultaneous, and that's what I mean by hybrid, this eliminates that structure as the predominant way we're meeting student needs, and so it allows us to focus, you use the term, running two school divisions in one, Mrs. Ogren, and so certainly from the division level, that's what we're doing, but then it doesn't leave the classroom teacher running two kinds of classrooms at once. So that would be the predominant difference and where we think we can really leverage the best practices in virtual learning for this purpose and the best practices for in-person learning for the other.
Thank you. That was going to be my follow-up question because I know a lot of families in my district have, and teachers as well, have expressed concern about just the lack of sustainability that their mode we're in now, and so it sounds like that this standalone academy will be a lot more sustainable for both our families and our teachers. And Dr. Cashwell, you make a great point, and the Virtual Academy isn't necessarily going to be trying to replicate the school day of an in-person experience. It's instead going to be leveraging best practices of the synchronous and asynchronous components for our students, and I think that's so important. A related but different angle question, we have Virtual Virginia available for our students and families, and I know from a school division kind of what the benefits are of having, you know, keeping our own students, but for our families, what is the benefit in enrolling in HVA as opposed to enrolling in something like Virtual Virginia?
Thank you. Excellent question. So we currently enroll students in Virtual Virginia courses, which is different from Virginia Virtual, which I know that naming doesn't help, but we enroll our students in Virtual Virginia courses in cases of extreme scheduling conflicts or if they wanted to pursue a course that their school was not running that academic year. And so this would be an opportunity for students to be able to take all of their courses through the HVA. the HVA.
And I would add to that, while typically, the way in Henrico County Public Schools, we've seen students enrolled with us leverage Virtual Virginia is typically course by course. We have seen in other school divisions, and particularly during the pandemic, where virtual learning in many school divisions haven't offered their own virtual learning program. They have had students in their school division participate fully in Virtual Virginia. They do have a program like that. You know, we believe we have the capacity to be able to serve our students within HCPS in this way. And that helps them, again, maintain the connection to their home school for athletics. That would be a benefit that you wouldn't have if you enrolled fully. You know, certainly, I think there's some quality and programming pieces through the Virginia Department of Education's Virtual Virginia. And we'll probably continue to leverage that course by course as needed for students, particularly those who are, may have a specific course need. But when we think of full-time enrollment or being fully virtual, I think the benefit of being able to offer it this way through HVA is sort of that feeling of a cohesive school community that will work to create some of those extracurricular pieces. And, you know, just again, that community connectedness.
Thank you. I really hope some of our families that have been pursuing fully virtual, I really hope that they will take note of our academy and come back to us.
And I think the Virginia Virtual is actually a private program that has a similar name to the Virginia Department of Education's Virtual Virginia. And so absolutely, to your point, there are a number of others out there like Virginia Virtual, where they are fully comprehensive online. And so do hope any Henrico students who have leveraged that might consider our HVA.
Thank you. And my apologies for getting my words mixed up on two very similar programs. Just a couple more questions. So you shared that the application would be available in early May. Do we, and what do we anticipate for the deadline to apply? Just ballpark, so just so our families have an idea of the window that they're looking at to make this decision.
We're using them, and thank you for the question. We are using the month of May for students to apply, so that they can be notified before the school year has concluded. So by the beginning of June is when they would be notified.
Thank you. I think that's really helpful for our families that are listening. I think it's also important to note, as a division, unlike some of the divisions around us, we don't have a decision, you know, that every family's making a decision of A or B. Our default is that our students are going back to the building, five days, full day instruction with a teacher. This is a separate program that families can choose. But other, unlike some other divisions, we're not polling every single family as to what their plan is. This is something that they're going to have to proactively apply for, correct?
Absolutely. And we really want the families to discuss with their child, what's the best option for them, using that family self-reflection tool? Because we want to make sure that we're meeting their needs with this option.
Absolutely. Thank you. How are the applications assessed? Is it merit? Is it lottery? Is it, can you give us an idea on--
I'm happy to take that question. To alleviate them trying to figure out who's going to step up, though I know they all are clear on the answer. So this is not acceptance based on the content of the application. The application allows us to have your information, so we know who you are, where you live, and what you're, that you're interested in being a part of our academy. And again, the self-assessment tool, we're relying on families to use with a student on their own to determine, before they make application and interest, that this may be a good fit. It'll help them understand that. But our intent is everyone who's interested to be able to look at those applications and make a match for our virtual academy. And so, you know, we're not intending to limit the number of seats at this time. We're really going to base it on interest. We want families who want to be able to make this choice to meet their needs. Again, we're going to ask if they think about, is this the right fit for me? And that they make a commitment to it for a year. Because, you know, obviously, we want to be able to provide the best services possible. And that means allocating our staffing and our resources accordingly, once we have interested applicants, and we're prepared to do that. When we think about sustaining this academy into the future, there may be some limitations on capacity. But when we realize that we are still potentially, as we enter the fall, in a situation where COVID is still present, and is a factor that may cause individuals to want to opt into this virtual environment, who might not be opting into it otherwise. So health conditions still play a role in that. So this is a viable option for those who might have that need. It may be that they can be served within their home school in person. You know, again, the default is you're an in-person learner. If there's some reason that may not meet your needs, maybe it's a health concern or condition, there may be an option that better meet your needs. And it may be HVA. It may be something else that you work with your principal on. Or maybe outside of health concerns, this is just an excellent option for you because of the way you learn and where you've found success. And so you'd make application. But recognizing, particularly with health concerns still abound with COVID, we certainly don't want to limit attendance here. And we'll work to take the applications we receive and hopefully be able to accommodate those.
I think that's so important for our families to hear. As Ms. Atkins pointed out, the word limited has been used in some of the preliminary advertisement, if you will, of this. And so for families to hear that we don't intend to have a set capacity. We're going to work as best as possible to meet the desire and need. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Wonderful. And so really, we're looking at families who feel like that this is a good fit for their learner, and that they are able to commit to the full year. Fantastic. And then the last thing I'll just point out, from conversations within my community and with Dr. Cashwell and team about this, I just want to reiterate that this is much like opting in, in some ways, to a specialty program. And it operates independently. It's an independent school. It has its own teachers. It has its own administrators. It's truly a school within itself. And so that's definitely different than what we saw this year. But as you outlined for me at the beginning, it has its own benefits. And so thank you all for launching into, kind of into the unknown we go with this. But this year was, as Ms. Ogburn pointed out, certainly a great catalyst for some pieces like this that we have been looking at for years.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Ms. Consella.
As a matter of fact, I do still have some questions. I didn't think I'd have any left by the time my colleagues asked them all. But actually, I do have some. So let's start with how we got here. I know that the pandemic brought us here, and we had to have virtual learning. And so our response with this virtual academy, is it our independent initiative, or is it a mandate?
This is an independent initiative. The only mandate post-pandemic we've seen recently is that we must offer in the fall full instruction in person for all students. And certainly, we intend to comply with that. And in fact, we encourage a return to in-person learning. This is very much an optional offering for families. I think Mrs. Shea categorized it well. If you think of a lot of the specialty offerings that we have, this would be one more of the many specialty offerings. And something that we were actually aiming for pre-pandemic. And so certainly, we were able to gain some traction and speed to getting to where we are today, silver lining of the circumstances. But, you know, even prior to the pandemic, whether it was students taking piecemeal courses virtually, or, you know, we see families leave to find these options for a fully virtual program privately, we knew this was something that there was demand for, and that would meet the needs of students that we were not currently able to meet.
Okay. Thank you. What does the hiring process, I know we touched on it a little bit up here, what does the hiring process look like potentially for the virtual academy? For example, will teachers currently teaching virtual due to COVID with accommodations be given any priority when staffing the academy? Or will teachers currently excelling at the virtual teaching model be recruited? Or is it just an open application process with HR?
Thank you for your question. This is an open application process. We're looking for highly qualified teachers who've been successful in the virtual environment. The, in regards to the folks who had accommodations, those expire at the end of the school year, and anybody can apply. Was there another part of your question?
Just about the teachers who are really currently excelling and have found their niche, just like this will be a model that certain students have excelled.
We absolutely, I'm sorry.
Well, just wondering if they'll be actually recruited versus just open application?
We will definitely ask for recommendations from principals about teachers who have been very successful in this environment. But of course, we want them to be interested in applying for the position.
Okay. I was just wondering how, what the process looks like. And then if the deadline for applications with families, if their process is taking place during May to be notified early June, then would the timeline for teacher applications, would it differ from the normal June 1 HCPS timeline that we normally have? I would imagine we have to know what students we have to have first, and then we'll staff it. Or will it be simultaneous? Or what do we expect?
I think we'll be able to accomplish some of that simultaneously. You know, we certainly want to establish a baseline staff. But we understand that our staffing needs may continue past that student deadline, because once we understand more what our student body will be, that'll help us understand additional staffing needs.
Do we anticipate being short any staff? I'm just thinking about the timeline of, you know, a lot of times, our building-level leaders in person, brick and mortar, will be, you know, arranging their staff component, staffing complement for the fall. And this sounds, are we prepared to deal with that and respond to whatever shortages present themselves?
We are. And I think that's one reason, you know, we're looking to end that process for student placement here at the end of May, because we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of both HVA and all of our other programs, both in-person and virtual. And so I think it's going to be, you know, in every year, we do see, we do monitor enrollment, because, you know, enrollment happens all through the summer, new families move to Henrico. And so we're monitoring school-based enrollment by grade level and by course at all times. And we're always prepared to adjust those. And then we do a September 30 count and adjust again. So, I mean, it's fair to say the process is fluid, but we hope by the end of May to have a good understanding of what the core enrollment will look like here, and how that may have any impact on our individual brick and mortar schools, and we'll be prepared to adjust accordingly.
Okay. And then I had a question from a constituent about the additional cost, about the funding. Where are we getting the funding? Where are we getting the funding? And how much do we expect this to cost additionally?
By and large, this is, you know, these are students who are already enrolled in Henrico schools. And so it's simply a matter of really reshuffling the way we allocate resources that are already budgeted for and planned for for these students. So the virtual learning itself doesn't add an additional cost. And so when we think about some of the costs to get this up and running, you know, you see core staff we already have on hand, doing the planning, the implementing. And so in the end, once we understand more what student enrollment looks like, and how we can manage that from an administrative perspective, there may be some additional costs that we believe we can, you know, again, it's just a matter of shuffling current allocations to meet student needs. But we'll keep the board posted should there be an additional cost. But I think it'd be minor administration pieces, but no additional cost for the programming itself for students.
And then, I guess in line with access and opportunity, will the mid-year admission, how will mid-year admissions be handled, the same way as they would be handled in brick and mortar? Whereas if a student suddenly transfers to Henrico County or moves to Henrico County, would they get admission to the virtual academy?
And I think that's something we're going to have to look at with capacity to see where we are. It may be that we're not able to admit any students after a certain point. It may be that we are. I think that's something we're going to know once we've done the initial enrollment period, to understand exactly, again, what our capacity looks like in our staffing.
And then forgive me if I missed it. Will the school day essentially be the same, if you will, the bell schedule at the K-12 HVA? It will not, correct?
I think there will be some similarities, but remembering, this is a standalone campus, and it's a K-12, experience that goes from elementary to high school. So we aren't necessarily mimicking the in-person experience, like what we've seen some of in this hybrid scenario, where teachers are duly teaching both. And so depending on the grade level, depending on the course, depending on the way the synchronous and asynchronous time are blended, you'll see some unique scheduling there.
And then I would just ask that we continue, I know mental health and the social emotional learning has, it's a part of so many of our conversations, it's on everyone's minds. I would just ask that we continue to keep that at the forefront as we plan with this initiative. And then the last, save the, the most interesting question for last. As I listened to the presentation, and I know that at least fall 2021 is going to be more of an open enrollment versus, but it's still going to be a one-year commitment, but it's going to be open to all of our students who find that it's a better fit for them. And I start to think about capacity and enrollment continuing to be a moving target, and how the impact of the virtual academy on capacity, and perhaps, would it further delay comprehensive redistricting? Because the board had said we would revisit it fall 2021. So I'm just wondering, do we, do we have a way to perhaps monitor that impact? Or is that something anyone else is thinking about at this time?
Very, an interesting question and an excellent one. You know, one thing that we've learned throughout the start of the pandemic is that our enrollment is what we would call unstable, right? So a lot of the predictive models we use just don't help us right now to understand what enrollment patterns are going to look like. We certainly remain ready to meet student needs. But when it comes to being able to determine which buildings might be at capacity, over capacity, what we knew in, you know, March prior to that initial emergency closure to now has changed a bit. And so certainly, the virtual academy enrollment may be higher this year, with COVID still a condition to consider when the school year starts. You know, hopefully, or fortunately, you know, as time moves on, we may see that that's not an impact. But what we know about the way students learn and families' needs and desires with various options may change some of our enrollment patterns. And we may see that the virtual academy is something that continues to draw a larger number of students. And we'll monitor that. I think we'll know a lot after this school year. Certainly would want to be proactive as we approach the school year after that, post-COVID, hopefully, to garner interest from our families, to really understand what that enrollment looks like, and how it might impact capacity, or any enrollment trends and patterns that we've seen. And so I think that's something that's going to be very prudent to watch, along with just general changing conditions in our communities.
I think, you know, Dr. Cashwell, Ms. Consella brings up a great point. You know, I think it will largely depend on how big the enrollment in virtual academy is, right? But, you know, if we do find it to be of significant size, where that needs to be considered, would it be possible at that time to survey the families who are in HVA to see if they enrolled due to health concerns, which we would assume would then likely return back to their home school following years? Or did they enroll due to desire for that learning path? And that may give us, again, we're going to have to look at kind of all the numbers in the story they tell to decide what we're, how we're going to move forward in the fall. But that may be a path that we're able to dissect that HVA data a little bit, if it's of significant size.
Absolutely. And then once the, you know, knowing going into the year, they opted in for one reason or another, and then knowing as the year progresses, you know, perhaps it wasn't a health reason, they came into the virtual academy, but they've found it's not a fit and don't want to return, or the interest of those who haven't enrolled who want to enroll. So we'll just be definitely staying tuned to those numbers, reporting those to the board as we're able to for various pulse checkpoints. But absolutely understand that when it comes to looking at enrollment, this is a significant factor to consider.
Yes. I just thought I'd get it out of my head and share it with others, to put it on your radar since it's online. And just thanks again to the team for this presentation. Look forward to us moving forward with HVA. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. So I'm serious. I don't have that many, because she asks like all of my questions. But can you speak real quick? So I know Dr. Cashwell just really kind of briefly alluded to the whole one-year commitment. And we know that that's our goal. But I'm aware of the family self-reflection tool. But let's just say, my circumstances have changed drastically, that I found out that this doesn't work for my child, and my child really wants to abandon, you know, virtual academy. What's the option to the family?
We're going to work with any family for extenuating circumstances. And I saw Dr. Champ coming forward, and I don't want to take that response if she's got anything to add there. But as is always the case, you know, when it comes to any programming that a student may opt into, our administrators are prepared to work with our families and understand extenuating circumstances. We do ask that this commitment be taken seriously, just as you would in enrolling in any of our specialty programs or centers, because, you know, there are a number of factors that are important when we think about meeting student needs. But we'll certainly be prepared on a case-by-case basis to work with families as their circumstances may change.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. So piggybacking on my colleague, Ms. Consella's-- So piggybacking on my colleague, Ms. Consella's just kind of asking you all to make sure that the social emotional support is major. Can you speak to it for me real quick, meaning can I feel confident that we're going to exhaust every opportunity to have a robust offering of social emotional support to our students in this, in this program?
Absolutely. And so our plan for social emotional supports for next year in general, whether it be within this program or in-person, we've been working on that all year. So we will continue through this program, through the HVA, to provide SEL curriculum at each grade level that is research-based, like we do with our in-person learners. And we will continue to have school-based mental health teams serve the HVA with our school counselors, school psychologists, and school social workers. So they'll serve that in the same capacity that they would in-person school as well. And we do recognize that not everybody's experience in the past year has been the same. And so we want to make sure that any of our SEL work and our response not only recognizes that, but honors each student's unique experience. And so as part of our initiatives for next year, with in-person learners as well as our HVA students, we are, we have been working to prepare for that response and for the return to students really throughout this year to make sure that we're prepared to identify need very proactively and then continue to respond to that need. So that will continue to take place through the HVA as well as in our in-person schools.
I really appreciate that because I think it's important for families to hear that we are just as in tune, we are just as conscious and aware of, aware of what's going on with the need. So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have any questions? Well, thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you very much to the entire HVA planning team for the efforts that have gone into the work thus far and all that's ahead of us. So the next item I have for the board is to seek your approval of the annual special education plan. And before I seek your approval formally, Dr. Davenport's just going to provide a high level overview for the board of the components of that plan, and then again, I'll seek your approval.
Well, good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. It's nice to talk to you all again this afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you and present you our annual plan for the use of special education federal grant funds. As you may know, each year I'm required to present an annual plan for the use of grant funds for approval by the Special Education Advisory Committee and then the school board. The presentation was provided to our CAC, our Special Education Advisory Committee, back in March, and today I'm presenting that plan to you for your review and your approval. Special education services for students with disabilities are funded through three different funding streams. Henrico County Public Schools receives funds from the federal government in the form of the Title VI Grants, state funds, and local funds. As shown in this chart, the majority of the funding to support students with disabilities is provided through local funding sources. Approximately 53% of the money used to pay for special education services comes from local tax dollars, with state revenue accounting for approximately 30% more. Only 17% of the total funds that are allocated to support special education come from federal grant funds, but it's that grant funding which is specifically addressed in this presentation. The VI grant is provided in two separate allocations. The 619 funds are used, and I apologize, there appears to be a typo on the slide, but the 619 funds are intended to support school-aged children. The 611 funds are intended to support school-aged children, while the 619 funds are specifically intended to provide support for early childhood special education services. Since the state has not yet provided our allocations for the 2122 school year, the plan we will provide to the Department of Education, in which we're outlining today, reflects level funding from the 2021 school year. As always, the majority of grant funds we receive are used to provide the salary and benefits for multiple special education teachers and instructional assistants. We do withhold a portion of the grant funds to support contract services. Specifically, we use grant funds to pay for a large portion of the sign language interpreters' cost across the district and to support approved independent educational evaluations. Another small portion of grant funds are used to purchase materials and supplies that are required to provide the specially-designed instruction that students require due to their disabilities. Grant funds provide a large portion of the assistive technology devices and supports required by many of our students. The other charges category that you see on the screen reflects the administrative costs which are associated with the grant. Each year, our finance department receives a formula which is provided by the state to determine the amount of administrative costs which should be charged through the grant for reimbursement. The 619 portion of the federal grant is specifically allocated to support students in our early childhood special education programs. As in the school-age grant, the majority of funds are used to provide the salary and benefits for early childhood special education personnel. However, only two of the 44 early childhood special education teachers can be funded through the grant. We allocate a small portion of the VI grant for materials and supplies. Specifically, these funds are used to support reading programming for our youngest learners. CCEIS and PSA are required set-asides associated with the VI grants. CCEIS is an acronym which stands for Coordinated Early Intervening Services. School districts may either be required or volunteer to set aside 15% of their total VI grant allocation to support CCEIS. CCEIS requirements are based upon federal standards for disproportionality in either discipline or identification of students with disabilities. If a school district shows a risk ratio of three to one over a consecutive three-year period in either of these areas, that district is required to set aside 15% of their federal grant allocation to provide direct services designed to decrease that disproportionality. In Henrico, we've been determined to be disproportionate in discipline, but I'm happy to inform you that our disproportionality rate has decreased significantly due in part to the work that we've done related to CCEIS. PSA is an acronym which stands for proportionate set-aside. All school districts are required to keep account of those students with disabilities who are parentally placed in private schools and to set aside funding based on a formula provided by BDOE for the provision of individualized services plans for those students who choose to access those services. These ISFPs can provide students with up to 36 hours per year of any combination of educational consultation services, speech therapy, occupational therapy, or other related Thank you so much for your time and attention this afternoon as we discuss the plan for using our Title VI federal grant funds. I'm happy to discuss any questions you may have regarding this presentation and the grant at this time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Davenport. Ms. Consella?
I just appreciate the funding, the funding explanation. And if I recall, we typically receive, I mean, this was the funding plan grant explanation, but we won't get a report on special education until August, is it?
Typically, we do a report on special education in August, but you may have read in your board updates this week. I did provide some overview information and some follow-up information outside of the grant because I knew you may have questions about that. But yes, we'll have a more formal update later on.
Right, it's a formal update. I was looking to, for those listening or who want to know, when is the actual update coming forward?
Typically, we do that in August. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you so much, Ms. Consella Mache.
Thank you for this update. I'll just say that I'm encouraged to hear that our disproportionality has significantly decreased, and I hope that the intentional, the continued investment in our CCEIS will continue to decrease that disproportionality.
Thanks, Ms. Mache. Ms. Ogbonn?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Atkins?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Davenport, for the presentation. You may have answered this and I just missed it. So let me start with saying that, but could you share with me what charges are or expenses are in that other category?
I did answer that to the best of my abilities. However, it's probably better answered by one of my colleagues in finance. However, other charges are administrative fees that are associated with the grant, and our very knowledgeable, budget-minded friends down in the finance department receive, I guess you would call them formulas, that they are used to determine what amount of each grant they charge for other charges or administrative costs. It's just, it's defined by the state.
I'm curious as to specifics around that, and of course, not in this moment, but at some point, if you could just get that information for me, that would be very helpful.
Absolutely. I'm happy to do that. I believe we provided some information last year. I believe Reverend Dr. Cooper had asked a similar question, so I believe I actually have a write-up about it, which I should have studied before this presentation, but I'm happy to get that for you.
No worries at all. I'm pleased that you're here. I'm pleased that you're sharing this presentation with us, and whenever you get that information to me, that would be appreciated. So thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that it, Ms. Atkins? Thank you so much. Ms. Davenport, thank you so much. No other questions from my colleagues? Is there a motion to approve the annual special education plan?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mrs. Shea and seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. The plan has been approved.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Davenport, and for the board for your approval of that application. So the next item, seeking your approval for an amendment to our Title IV Part A federal grant. We are amending that grant to leverage funding for family advocate positions to continue to, of course, support our students and families and in service of also our strategic plan goal through school-family partnerships. Seeking your approval of the amendment to Title IV Part A federal grant application.
Thank you so much, Madam Superintendent. Is there a motion to approve Title IV Part A application amendment?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ogbonn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The waiver request has been approved.
Thank you. For the next item, I am seeking once again the board's approval of the Head Start Transportation waiver request that will be effective for the 2122 school year.
Is there a motion to approve the 2021-2022 Head Start Transportation Waiver Request?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The waiver request has been approved.
Thank you. Next, I am seeking the board's acceptance of increased federal grant funding in the amount of $18,095 to provide cost-of-living adjustments to our HCPS Head Start employees. This increase is part of the 4.4% pay increase the county's school board and board of supervisors will be, again, providing in April, so this is an adjustment here, again, to that Head Start grant.
Can all of us make that motion together? Is there a motion to accept federal grant funding in the amount of $18,095 to provide cost-of-living adjustments to HCPS Head Start employees?
So moved.
I've got joint motions. Moved by Mrs. Consella. It's been seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Any opposed? The grant has been accepted.
Thank you. For the next item, I am seeking the board's acceptance of Head Start COVID-19 funding in the amount of $51,767, which will support instructional supplies for our early learning preschool students and families.
Is there a motion to accept the Head Start COVID-19 funding of $51,767?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogbonn. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. The funding has been accepted.
Thank you. Next, seeking the board's acceptance of a grant in the amount of $16,147, $47.29 from the Henrico Education Foundation and the Community Foundation for this grant, which supported our professional learning endeavors, and we are so grateful.
Just want to acknowledge the presence of the CEO of Henrico Education Foundation, Mr. Mike Taylor in the back. Thank him for his continued support for our programs and our division. Is there a motion to accept the Heff and Community Foundation grant of $16,147.29?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ogbonn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The grant has been accepted.
All right. For the next item, we are going to take a moment to recognize our recipients and finalists for the 2020 REB Awards for Teaching Excellence. And so now we would turn to that recognition, which is done in, I believe, a video format for convenience.
The Community Foundation has recognized seven Henrico County educators for outstanding instruction for 2020. Four HCPS instructors won the REB Award for Teaching Excellence, and three additional teachers were finalists. The winners received grants ranging from $8,300 to $11,900, which they will use to become even better instructors, traveling to continue their love of learning and pursue cutting-edge study in their fields. Across the Richmond area, a total of 18 winners and 13 finalists were selected from among the 109 teachers nominated by students, parents, and colleagues. The foundation's awards identify, recognize, and support teaching excellence in the Richmond area and are given to nominees who have distinguished themselves through their inspiring performance in the classroom. The four winners from Henrico are Aaron Daniels from Quayacuson Middle School, who received $11,000 to travel to visit some of the healthiest places on earth, Spain and Costa Rica, to study habits and ideas that promote health and wellness. The innovative learning coach aims to expand her skills by adding authentic health and wellness strategies to improve herself, the school, and the school division. Mike Fetzko from Godwin High School, he received $8,300 to travel to national parks in Alaska to observe the impact of climate change on the environment and topography. Donna Corey from Greenwood Elementary School, she received $11,900 to visit national parks and participate in traditional folk schools to learn, connect, and apply independent, sustainable living skills. Sarah Peña from Greenwood Elementary School, she received $11,700 to explore museums, model schools, and multicultural traditions in Dubai, Los Angeles, Chicago, and New York City. Peña will study ways to foster global citizenship by connecting students across cultures, languages, and continents. Certification from the National Board for Professional Teaching.
Well, it almost doesn't need an introduction. As you see, our next agenda item is to recognize those who've received our National Board Certification for Fall 2020, and we'll just take it away.
Teaching Standards is the teaching profession's highest mark of accomplishment. This year, 32 Henrico County Public Schools teachers met that remarkable standard, the most ever for HCPS. In addition to those earning certification status for the first time, five teachers renewed their certifications. HCPS's 32-teacher class is the most of any school division in Virginia this year. It's the sixth-largest group in the nation, and it makes HCPS number four in Virginia for board-certified instructors on staff. The three school divisions in the Commonwealth with more board-certified teachers on staff are all larger than Henrico. It is the most ever in one year for Henrico County Public Schools. Henrico's new National Board Certified Teachers are Miriam Ashworth, Godwin High School; MC Bernhardt, Short Pump Elementary School; Elizabeth Broda, Henrico High School; Tara Brown, Wilder Middle School; Eric Byers, Highland Springs High School; Rebecca Chipman, Henrico High School; Phyllis Clayter, Freeman High School; Marina Croce Anduiza, Godwin High School; Megan DeRose, Tucker High School; Laura Dickerson, Short Pump Elementary School; Debbie Fazenbaker, Mayberry Elementary School. for HCPS. In addition to those earning certification status for the first time, five teachers renewed their certifications. HCPS's 32-teacher class is the most of any school division in Virginia this year. It's the sixth-largest group in the nation, and it makes HCPS number four in Virginia for board-certified instructors on staff. The three school divisions in the Commonwealth with more board-certified teachers on staff are all larger than Henrico. It is the most ever in one year for Henrico County Public Schools. Henrico's new National Board Certified Teachers are Miriam Ashworth, Godwin High School; MC Bernhardt, Short Pump Elementary School; Elizabeth Broda, Henrico High School; Tara Brown, Wilder Middle School; Eric Byers, Highland Springs High School; Rebecca Chipman, Henrico High School; Phyllis Clayter, Freeman High School; Marina Croce Anduiza, Godwin High School; Megan DeRose, Tucker High School; Laura Dickerson, Short Pump Elementary School; Debbie Fazenbaker, Mayberry Elementary School; Melissa Gladden, Pinchbeck Elementary School; Elizabeth Giffen, Hermitage High School; Sean M. Gula, Sandston Elementary; Tetra Hall, Quiacuson Middle School; Katie Hassan, Glen Allen Elementary School; Valerie Hume, Mayberry Elementary School; Nicholas E. Ingramham, Henrico High School; Dawn Johns, Pinchbeck Elementary School; Jennifer Jones, Hermitage High School; Yvette Lee, Tucker High School; Gregory Lindaker, Henrico High School; Morgan Meadows, Freeman High School; Sharon Middleton, Skipwith Elementary School; Dana Morris, Godwin High School; Morgan Nash, Deep Run High School; Ashley O'Carroll, Highland Springs High School; Elizabeth Phillips, Harvey Elementary School; Aaron Reddick, Ridge Elementary School; Stephanie Salisbury, Hermitage High School; Janet Smith, Freeman High School; Catherine Snow, Tucker High School; Jennifer Tully, Deep Run High School; Calypso Gilstrap, Tuckahoe Middle School; Carrie King, Dumbarton Elementary School; Faith Sampad, Johnson Elementary School; Elizabeth Walsh, Johnson Elementary School; and Sean Young, Henrico High School. Congratulations to these educators and their amazing efforts.
All right. Well, we certainly share hearty congratulations with our REB Award winners, our newly nationally-board certified teachers. Certainly proud of the efforts of these educators. All right. The next item is to continue our recognitions, and I would like the school board to have the opportunity to hear about and recognize our Librarians of the Year, and Courtney Bostain's here to share information about. And it is, I believe, School Library Month, so it's appropriate that we recognize our Librarians of the Year.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Anna Lingerfelt, Librarian at Davis Elementary School, was chosen as the 2021 Elementary School Librarian of the Year. Christine Bonner, Principal at Davis Elementary, had this to say about her. One of Anna's greatest strengths is her incredible connection to students. Each morning, despite the long lines for book checkout, she takes time to connect with each student and find good-fit books for every child. She is aware of what books students are reading and encourages them to find similar books. With increasing diversity in our school, Anna works hard to ensure that all students have access to books, even when they aren't at school. Congratulations, Anna Lingerfelt, HCPS Elementary Librarian of the Year. Calypso Gilstrap, Librarian at Tuckahoe Middle School, was chosen as the 2021 Secondary Librarian of the Year. Rick Short, a science teacher at Tuckahoe, said Calypso has redefined my understanding of a school librarian. In my 13 years of teaching, I have seen and experienced many forms of the school library, and Calypso is the epitome of what is needed to help our students become life-ready. She is a fantastic resource for teachers, students, and administrators. Calypso joins planning meetings for all subjects and encourages and seeks out ways to add depth and media literacy to lessons. Congratulations to Calypso Gilstrap, HCPS Secondary Librarian of the Year.
All right. Congratulations to our Librarians of the Year. So pleased. What a wonderful treat it's been to recognize so many of our HCPS staff at our meeting this afternoon. For our next item, we are here to provide the board an update on our high school redesign efforts. As you know, this has been a topic of which we've been frequently updating the board on our progress, as it's a multi-layered journey. And so, for our next update, I'm going to turn it over to the team that's come to the podium. Dr. Farrell, kick us off.
Good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Thomas Farrell, Director of High School Education, and I'm joined by Mac Baten, Director of Workforce and Career Development. We are here today to update you on the journey of high school redesign in HCPS. Henrico County Public Schools expresses a division-wide commitment to every student by communicating a vision of inclusiveness, the right to achieve, the support to succeed. High school redesign aligns directly to destination 2025, the plan for HCPS, which states, "Students will have life-ready experiences during their educational careers that lead to college or career readiness. Students will have opportunities to engage in rigorous learning experiences. Students will be supported through community and school partnerships. Students will be empowered to advocate for themselves and others, and students will have their social and emotional needs met." We began this journey with the challenge to better engage high school students by purposefully connecting their educational needs and interests through opportunities to personalize and tailor their academic path. High school redesign is all about all of us working as a collective unit to promote equity and to provide students with the experiences that align to their individual goals. When you think of high school redesign, think about it like a road trip, where it is all about the journey, rethinking, reimagining, and recreating along the way. We still arrive at a destination, but along the way, we experiment and alter routes to allow experiences to inform our journey. The path may be winding, but sometimes it's the journey that teaches you a lot about your destination. A national call to action to reform K-12 education, specifically high schools, dates back to 2013. Numerous experts have argued for new approaches to be considered to make progress towards achieving the national goal of equitable and rigorous opportunities for all students. The profile of a graduate, and subsequently, Henrico learner profile, describes the knowledge, skills, and attributes that students must attain to be successful in school and in their life. With J.R. Tucker in Highland Springs receiving new facilities and collaborating with other high schools around the state through the Innovation Grant, we saw this as an opportunity to explore what high schools could be in HCPS. This opportunity allowed us to explore and pilot innovative ideas as a starting point to identify powerful, evidence-based strategies that would influence transformation in all of our high schools. We realized there were other departments on a similar journey, working to achieve the same goals for K-12 students that connect with the work and goals of high school redesign. This highlighted the value in connecting and building cohesion among the efforts of all these work streams and reoptimize our routes along the way. At the start of 2020, we shared an update around those initial efforts with Tucker and Highland Springs, along with the expansion of high school redesign to include three committees to address additional needs. While we started with a specific focus for Highland Springs and Tucker through the Innovation Grant and the preparation for new school buildings, we see the value in all high schools utilizing structures and strategies to examine their school programs. For example, many of our high schools will offer interdisciplinary courses or provide students with cross-curricular experiences during the 21-22 school year. All of our high schools utilize the challenges we've experienced through the pandemic to strengthen advisory programs that support the whole child. And all high schools strengthen in-building supports for students so we can be more targeted in identifying outside resources necessary to help students who are struggling to get on track. Today, we will update you on all six routes of our journey, along with lessons learned and next steps to continue to refine our routes in the journey of high school redesign. In an effort to provide engaging, learner-centered experiences for all students, the focus this year was to explore those opportunities at Tucker and Highland Springs through the work outlined in the Innovation Grant. Both Highland Springs and Tucker piloted interdisciplinary courses during the 2021 school year. In addition, we realized some of our other high schools also offered interdisciplinary courses and cross-curricular opportunities during the 2021 school year. We also expect to see the addition of interdisciplinary courses and cross-curricular opportunities in more high schools during the 21-22 school year and beyond. From this work, we see room for growth in supporting teachers to intentionally provide these experiences through coursework. We recognize interdisciplinary courses require adjustments to course offerings and scheduling that may create barriers to realize this work. Identifying opportunities for cross-curricular learning experiences through intentional planning and collaboration between teachers will provide more access and opportunity for our students. Based on knowledge gained this year from our pilot, the next steps for interdisciplinary courses and cross-curricular experiences include: Providing support for all high schools to use the strategies from Tucker and Highland Springs experiences to review current programming and identify entry points for interdisciplinary course development or offerings. Collaborating with content specialists to provide teachers with curriculum that is cross-curricular and support high schools to implement that curriculum with fidelity. Identifying and capturing best practices of cross-curricular instruction that is currently happening in our schools. Providing professional learning to teachers on how to build in cross-curricular projects. And reviewing assessment practices to support rigorous programming, i.e. cross-curricular experiences.
Good afternoon. This year, we focused on analyzing the current landscape of our high school work-based offerings, and defined all work-based learning opportunities utilizing the current VDOE definitions, and developed a chart to delineate each option offered at each high school. This analysis allowed us to identify needs and areas of success already happening in our high school programs. We're fortunate enough to have added a Workforce and Career Development Specialist and an Elementary/Middle School Career Exposure Coordinator to the Department of Workforce and Career Development. These two positions will be pivotal in helping our students, parents, and teachers connect to businesses and career and technical education coursework that will prepare them for their future. The Workforce and Career Development Specialist connects students to our business and industry partners. Through the three-year approach, promotes a career after high school by engaging students, families, staff, business, and post-secondary institutions to connect education with career pathways of the future. The Elementary and Middle Career Exposure Coordinator helps students understand career pathways and the options in elementary and middle school. This position also coordinates Elementary Career Fairs, Middle School Career Connections Course, field trips such as Mission Tomorrow, career nights on middle schools, and coordinates internal career exposure opportunities such as visiting classrooms. We also found success in providing students with exposure through the Life Ready Expo experiences offered previously. We are continuing to expand those expos to occur during the school hours to promote further connections with students and employers. We see an opportunity for growth with recreating the structures to increase accessibility of work-based learning opportunities for all students. This work also highlights the need to cultivate mindsets, common understandings, and implementation around internships, job shadowing, and other work-based learning opportunities. We see value in collaborating with school counseling on academic and career planning, utilizing the Major Clarity Program to embed this process early in a student's educational journey and connect to their interests. In our subcommittee work around the community, in our subcommittee work around community resources and supports, we identified the need to continue to develop resources, guidelines, and procedures for business partners' engagement to purposefully align resources for students utilizing the Department of Workforce and Career Development to provide the needed connection. So what are our next steps? Collaborate with school counseling to make connections with high school academic and career planning and align efforts with the implementation of Major Clarity. Provide professional learning for staff to foster the understanding around work-based learning opportunities. Cultivate mindsets of the importance of these experiences and strategies to ensure that all students realize the opportunities available and connect them with their interests and passions. And then research alternative approaches to scheduling to continue to meet the needs of our students.
A goal from the Innovation Grant and a key tenet of high school redesign, of the high school redesign philosophy, is the development of advisory structures to provide opportunities for students to grow and develop life skills and academic knowledge. Tucker and Highland Springs worked this year to design and deliver learning experiences to support student growth of productive workplace skills and provide academic and social and emotional supports based on student needs. This year especially has emphasized the need for more social and emotional support for our students. While Tucker and Highland Springs served as pilots for advisory structures, all high schools recognize the need to design with intention to implement strategies that reimagine this experience for students in their high school. We see the next step is to continue and have each high school collaboratively define the essentials by grade level. Students need to be successful in high school and beyond. We will identify opportunities for student voice in the process to design a curriculum that embeds lessons on the essentials while allowing for personalized lessons to meet the needs of their specific community of learners. During the 21-22 school year, we will build on existing structures by identifying opportunities for student voice to be embedded in the process of the design of advisory and the total school community. Each high school will identify opportunities to include students in this process. We'll identify essential learning by grade-level bands through principal connections and thought partners. Develop lessons to layer the essential learning that all students will receive, with the flexibility for schools to provide additional lessons that align to the needs and growth of their specific audience or timely events. And last, we'll provide the teachers with the support to foster a growth mindset and implement lessons with fidelity while being able to adjust when other learning opportunities arise. We recognize that if we expand opportunities for all students, we first need to ensure we have the appropriate support in school buildings to enhance their success. This propelled us to think about how we structure academic, social, and emotional supports for students so we are intentional with the implementation of those supports. This year, we were able to strengthen building structures to provide a more personalized experience based on a student's needs by designing teams with an intentional intervention focus. The creation of attendance teams, intervention teams, or re-engagement teams have fostered a community approach to supporting students within our high schools. Beyond talking to families over the phone and leading virtual meetings, members from our school staffs visited homes of students who were disengaged from school. Prior to the 2021 school year, we recognized that many of our students needed additional support beyond our buildings. In their May presentation, the Division of Student Support and Wellness will go into detail on how the community-based wraparound supports connect to our school buildings. Our next steps, as it relates to wraparound supports, are to continue to review and reflect on the current supports for students in all high schools to adjust to best meet the needs of all- of all students. Collaborate with the Division of Student Support and Wellness to expand awareness and investment in the process available to schools for student supports beyond the school building. And work with schools to identify early warning signs so we can begin to meet the needs of students as soon as possible. Historically, our advanced course programming enrollment lacks diversity, and in further diagnosing the problem with the subcommittee, we recognized that there was a need for better awareness of advanced pathways available to students, as well as a need to expand the variety of pathways for students to allow them to connect their interests and passions to recruit students to explore different pathways for learning. This year, our focus was on expanding awareness and access of our students and families around the current pathways available for students. High schools focus efforts to have a personalized dialogue with students to help them connect their interest and learning path to AP, IB, dual enrollment, or CTE pathways that lead to industry certifications. This concerted effort made a difference for our students and increased enrollment for our historically marginalized students in AP courses. As the board is aware, IB programs exist at Tucker and Henrico High School. For our next steps, we plan to continue to work collaboratively with Mr. Mike Dussault, Director of Elementary Teaching, Learning, and Innovation, and April Craver, IB Instructional Specialist, around the plan shared at the March 25th board meeting to expand access to IB courses and reimagine offerings for students to participate in IB learning experiences. Currently, we offer dual enrollment courses through our Engineering Specialty Center, ACA Programs, ACE Centers, and Economics and Personal Finance through Longwood University. To expand enrollment of dual enrollment, our first step is to identify teachers who have the credentials to teach dual enrollment courses to determine the courses to make available to more students throughout the county. Continuing with next steps, we plan to collaborate with school counseling to align efforts with the implementation of major clarity to make connections with high school academic and career plans to ensure possibilities for students to connect with their interests and passion, as well as take more control of their educational decisions based on where they want to go.
We recognize that there are barriers for historically marginalized students with the current structures in place for specialty center programs. We work collaboratively with Ford NGL to gather insights of our current programming and identified specific interventions to support the expansion and access and the participation in our specialty centers for all high school students. They facilitated focus groups for this review, and I would like to take this time to share a summary of their key findings, which are broken down by strengths, challenges, and recommendations. First, the recommendations. Or, excuse me, first the strengths. Some of the highlighted strengths from the Ford NGL report were the commitment and passion of the programs by our center directors and teachers, the high level of student engagement, small learning environment, and post-secondary opportunities. Some of the challenges that were noted in the report were equitable access, participation by students within our center does not reflect the demographics of our overall student populations, the middle school preparation, specialty center expansion that we should consider expanding centers that draw the most interest for our students, and a need to strengthen the business partnerships through advisory boards. For recommendations, provide more equitable access to the specialty centers, revise the application process to ensure uniform academic criteria for all centers, and provide a cohesive plan for all students to be informed regarding the requirements to attend the center and consider a start-stop-sustain plan in relationship to the current specialty center offerings. So during the 2122 school year, we will look at the space, program interest, the capacity to determine where the room for growth can be in some of our centers. We also will open two new centers and identify the funding source to maintain these centers, which these will be covered later in the recommendations. We also will revamp the specialty center application and acceptance process to provide more consistent and equitable opportunity for historically marginalized students. And each high school will review specialty center programming to identify courses that would benefit all students in the high school.
At this time, I would like to thank Chamber RBA and the Henrico Education Foundation for their financial support and partnership with HCPS. In fact, Mr. Brian Anderson, President and CEO of Chamber RBA, is with us this afternoon. Mr. Anderson, please stand and be recognized. Mike Taylor, Chief Executive Officer for the Henrico Education Foundation, is unable to join us today, but he is well aware of how thankful we are. As a result of their generosity and support, and the support of our board, Ford NGL not only reviewed specialty center programs, they also reviewed the academic programs for all high schools along with the ACE Centers and provided additional findings from their work. We have utilized these additional findings to support our planning as we transition from the focus of the Innovation Grant with the pilot schools to all high school redesign. At this time, I would like to highlight just a few of the strengths, challenges, and recommendations from the Ford Report. Strengths highlighted by Ford NGL are division and school leadership, which includes central office leadership and high school principals, and also the Chamber RBA partnership that exists with Henrico County Public Schools. Some of the challenges that were noted are a need to strengthen how we promote career pathways to students, and opportunities for us to better maximize business and civic engagement. Some of the recommendations from Ford are to be more intentional about promoting multiple career pathways to students, and also to compile an inventory of current businesses who are participating within HCPS to determine their level of engagement on a work-based learning continuum of low intensity through high intensity activities. Overall, we found this information from the report to be extremely valuable. As we move forward with the high school redesign journey, we see the need to re-optimize our routes, to remove her from a focus guided by the Innovation Grant to a focus driven by Destination 2025, the plan for HCPS to provide clear communication of the vision for high school redesign, utilizing Tucker and Highland Springs as models for sustained growth. Supporting the whole child takes more than programs and services that we offer to students. It takes cultivating the mindsets and providing the learning spaces that allow the programs and services to positively impact students, such as a culture of high expectations and equitable opportunities for all, welcoming and inspiring learning environments, and rigorous, relevant, and meaningful learning experiences. The driver for all of this work is academic and career planning. To achieve the vision of high school redesign, we realize it is dependent on many factors, students' experience before high school, which emphasizes that this is more than a journey of high school redesign. It is about the pre-K to 12 journey. It is about students having the access as well as the awareness of the pathways and the support to reach their destination through an individualized pathway to success, whatever that looks like for them. We ask that you use a design mindset and look at high school redesign as an iterative process where we learn from the work and the needs of our students to continuously rethink, reimagine, and recreate the culture, environments, and experiences our students need to be life-ready, whatever that life may entail. At this time, I would like to share a few of our stops as we continue on this journey. In an effort to strengthen the connection between the school and business community, we've identified an opportunity to propose two new specialty centers to open fall 2022, one at Hermitage and one at Verona that connect with current industry trends. At Hermitage High School, an additional specialty center would focus on the Allied Health and Medical Services and allow students to immerse themselves in courses related to the allied health field while earning an advanced high school diploma and potentially an associate's degree. A new specialty center focused on the health field makes sense for Hermitage given the close proximity to the Hermitage ACE Center, surrounding medical facilities, and the demand and availability of jobs in the medical field. At Verona High School, an additional specialty center would focus on environmental science and sustainability, which offers a unique opportunity for students to expand their understanding of environmental stewardship and sustainable energy. Students would learn about sustainable best practices leveraging outdoor spaces proximal to Verona. Students who participate in this proposed center would have access to natural resources and spaces such as the James River and Deep Bottom Environmental Research Center, a Henrico property. Students would conduct research and engage in authentic and connected experiences that are relative to their lives and broader community. Participants of this proposed center would earn an advanced studies diploma and potentially an associate's degree. As a result of the feedback from Ford NGL and through looking at our historical data and application process, we are working with the Division of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation to gather input from various stakeholders through focus groups as we work to propose a new application process for specialty centers that is equitable for all students. In addition, we also plan to increase collaboration between elementary, middle, and high school to better inform students and families of high school programming such as specialty centers and ACE Centers. While the 2021 school year was challenging in many ways, it afforded us the opportunity to be more intentional about creating structures to support students through a community approach. We will continue to strengthen our re-engagement teams to provide immediate support to students who are experiencing challenges by creating early warning systems that signal when students are in need of additional resources. Flexible scheduling is one of the hallmarks of high school redesign. We will spend the 2122 school year researching and examining how we can better utilize the time that we have within the school day to better engage students in work-based learning experiences and experiences that are necessary for them to continue along their personal Next steps on our journey. During the May 27th board meeting, we will share a comprehensive plan on the development and budget for the two new proposed specialty centers and provide findings from the focus groups and progress on the proposed specialty center application process. In the fall, we will share progress on each high school's re-engagement teams and identification of support structures for implementation at the start of the 2122 school year and provide additional details around action items and alignment to Destination 2025. Thank you for coming along on our journey this afternoon. We look forward to the exciting adventures to come with high school redesign. At this time, we will take any questions the board may have.
I want to thank you both for the exhaustive presentation and for the depth in which you have shared so much important information. I'm going to change up a little bit on my method of choosing people to speak. I'm gonna start to my left and come back to my right and then go back to my left. So I'm gonna start with Ms. Ogborne, and I'm gonna come to Ms. Cancela, then I'm gonna go to Ms. Atkins, then I'll go to Ms. Chase. So Ms. Ogborne, if you could start us off.
Okay, thank you. First of all, just wow. I mean, just an amazing amount of information, and I'm so excited to hear all of this. You know, we've been hearing little bits and pieces, but to see it all together. But if we could go back to slide, I think it's three, there's something that really jumped out at me. I mean, as a teacher, I'm a raise-the-bar kind of person. I always try to have challenges for my students and help all of them reach those challenges. And because, you know, we've talked about this before, I think we all believe that all children can learn. And all children, we have to meet them where they are and meet the needs that they have. But you've got, it sort of seems to me that you've got ensure equitably rigorous opportunities. Those four words are just, to me, the driving force behind all of this work. And a lot of the work that we do, and I kept hearing as you were talking and the slides that you shared, the word rigorous. And I'm so excited that our students are gonna have that open to them. I know they do in a lot of ways now, but this is very focused to ensure equitably rigorous opportunities, no matter where you live, no matter what school you're in. And I can even envision that we've had this issue come up in the past where, for example, you're at one school and you only have a few students who want to engage in a class, and that class is available at another school. And I can imagine partnerships that are developing to make classes available to students no matter where they are. But to me, those four words are just so important, and they drive everything else that comes after. I also kind of get a feeling from this that this plan feels like a partnership. It's a partnership that is students, staff, community, all of us working together, like you said, as those journeys merge together. And we've been, this is very intentional work. It's intentional for all of our schools to be able to have it happen. But it seems to me that that partnership, bringing outside partners, which I know we do already, but to expand that is necessary to make this work and for us to achieve the goal that we have. And later on, you talked about our specialty centers and expanding and increasing enrollment. I think that is exciting news, that we are looking at revamping how our kids apply. That is really necessary work. It's one we all hear a lot about as kids apply to the specialty centers. I think that's long overdue, that we look at that and how it's done. But I'll take the opportunity to, we've talked about this a little bit, but I think at the same time we're examining the application process and how kids get in, I would like us to see an expansion of opportunities at all of our specialty centers, increasing our numbers. And I know this has a budget impact and all of that, but we've talked about this before in regards to Maggie Walker and regards to our specialty centers. I would like to see more seats open so that we have more seats available and more opportunities available to our students across the district. To me, we have hundreds of students who apply every year for 50 seats at our specialty centers. And so maybe the next step, what we're ready for now, is expanding that as well as part of this, we've got an opportunity here as we're looking at this. So obviously, that's a little bit of a different topic here, but I just think it's part and parcel of what we're talking about. As far as the two new specialty centers, I would ask, is this information, we talked about at the last joint school board, Board of Supervisors meeting, that as soon as this information became a little more solid, we would be sharing this information with the Board of Supervisors? So do we have plans at this point, Dr. Cashwell, to do that?
Well, certainly, and I know there is a chair, vice chair meeting coming up just next week, so I know this is certainly a topic that they'd been interested in an update on, and I know I'll be present and able to help leadership provide that update. And to your point about capacity and additional seats, and certainly well noted, related to our specialty centers, I just want to remind the board and the public especially about our increased number of seats in career and technical education. So excited about, we know when we think about where there's such demand and not enough seats, we certainly see that in some of our specialty seats, we certainly see that in some of our specialty centers, but we have historically seen the largest number of students we haven't been able to serve in those career and technical education programs. So so excited about the approval of the CIP plan that includes not just the renovation of both of our A Centers, but the expansion of seats to serve a much larger number of students in those relevant programs.
Right, and I think it is important, when the two of you do go to the chair, vice chair meeting, that it's shared with them as well as the other members of the board because they have been our great partners in getting our two new high schools built, and we're all so excited about that for next fall. But I think, you know, our planning, we made a commitment to them to make sure that they were aware, and I think that, I think that's great if we can add that to the list of items for discussion. But I think, the other thing I want to commend you on is getting this information to kids early. You talked about how, you know, informing students at the elementary age and as they come into middle school, what's available to them. I mean, I've had a lot of parents talk to me over the years of, you know, I'm thinking about this in third and fourth grade, and it's when they get into fifth grade, what choices they make in high school, in middle school will inform the classes that are available to them in high school. So it is feedback I've received from parents, they want that early. And I know some parents are worried about pigeonholing their kids too early and that kind of stuff, but, you know, giving our kids more opportunities in high school to explore their interests and it meets their needs, but also gives them a glimpse of what I'd like to do after high school is a wonderful advantage our kids have that in some counties they don't. So I'm really excited about this. I appreciate the amount of work that has gone onto this is, you know, obvious to us, and we're so appreciative of all of the work that's gone into it for everybody who's had their hands into it. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I know this has been a long time coming, and I personally am really excited about it and what's to come. So thank you, Reverend Cooper.
Is that it, madam? Thank you so much. Ms. Cancela.
Yes, and thank you. And I'm very excited about this journey we're on, and I'm so excited about talking about K-12 pathways and especially, especially CTE and our specialty centers. And it's my understanding, though, that some of the things I really, 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 really wanted to hear today are gonna come possibly in May, I think you said, Dr. Farrell, because I want to talk about how we're gonna recruit and retain teachers and how we're gonna work on students not feeling isolated, especially some of our marginalized students that we recruit and retain staff to work in these centers and the A Center so that we can retain students and staff and have successful outcomes. And then also, I'm interested in talking about the expanded capacity now that we're gonna be meeting the needs of all of the students that are actually interested in applying. We won't have to deny students like we had before. And then as we expand that capacity, we're gonna have detailed execution plans, I would imagine, and talk about program relevancy. I can't wait to hear about that because I think the team was working on that as well. But those are the things that I really can't wait till we get to, that this is part one and that's part two as we move forward. But I did want to address Ford NGL, and again, like Ms. Ogborne said, is to thank the Chamber and Henrico Education Foundation for funding the external review of our programming. An external review is always nice to have, but because I did receive quite a bit of feedback, I wanted to just clarify for the record and for anyone in the room and for my colleagues that I appreciated the detailed report feedback from Ford NGL and the 101 focus group meeting that each board member had with their team. But I believe our CTE and specialty center programming is already beyond what any further engagement would provide HCPS. And I just wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page with what this presentation meant in conjunction with the Ford NGL report. And as the superintendent, is there any recommendation to the board today about moving forward in any other phase with Ford NGL?
That's not part of the recommendations we've brought forward at this point. Certainly wanted to provide the board the very recent findings of that first step, that report we found. We certainly highlighted a number of the accolades and the recommendations and the opportunities, and certainly have kicked out for immediate action some next steps on our behalf that we thought were very timely in regards to other feedback we've received, the application process for specialty centers and so on. So certainly would look to the board for feedback on any next steps.
Okay, thank you. As you mentioned, application process, did you say the application process will be the same going forward?
No, ma'am, we're currently running focus groups through our DA department to gather stakeholder feedback to consider a proposed new process for specialty centers.
Good, good, thank you. And then is our goal to retain, our goal is to retain comprehensive high schools, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then, and the end goal, I mean, again, just because I've got some constituents who have blown up my phone, our end goal with High School Redesign is for our students to be life-ready anywhere in the world?
Absolutely.
Not just life-ready locally?
No.
To local employers?
Competitive globally, yes.
Okay, all right. And then this next question might be for Mr. Bayton. When were our CTE and ACE programs last reviewed for relevancy?
Well, the CTE programs are reviewed all the time by our Business Advisory Council. We're constantly getting feedback from them, the EDA, to make sure we are moving the ball in the right direction, and it's an ongoing process. It's also required by part of our Perkins grant that we're looking at the relevancy of our program and that we're meeting the needs of the local and regional business market.
Okay, so I guess the specialty center relevance review is something that...
Specialty center is done a little bit differently. The last time we really took a comprehensive review at the specialty center, I believe, was 2016 roughly?
Okay.
Where we basically kind of went through a lot of these similar steps where we had focus groups and looked to see where we were with our programs at that point in time.
Okay, and then, one of the things I'm thinking about as I think about our centers as well as our ACE programming and just hearing out in the community and with friends of other applicants to these programs is, have we looked at the relationship between the volume of applications we receive versus the number of applicants? For example, I mean, I guess what I'm really trying to understand is, do we know whether it's our students applying because they're interested, or is it just, at some point, is it just a center to get to the rigor as to the GPA because some of our students are specialty centers have an advantage when it comes to the GPA? Have we looked at that?
I don't think we have. I think that's part of what we need to, and part of the goal, Thomas, I don't know if you...
Right, that's something that we're taking a look at, Mrs. Cancela, but it really varies by student and family. In some respects, students have a genuine passion for a particular curriculum. In some respects, it may be to get to a certain school. In other respects, there is that perception that, you know, certain centers carry more weight, you know, when you look at a student's profile for college.
Okay, and I would just, and I would actually like to, for us to look at that as we look at applications versus applicants going forward, because I think the interest level weighs heavily in terms of outcome, outcome and attendance too, and engagement and whatever the student is enrolled in. So I'd like for us to pay attention to that. And then I see our new Hermitage Center expansion. Can you tell me a little bit about the pathways that are gonna be available there?
Well, first off, I wish my mask wasn't here so you could see how wide the smile is underneath of it, but we're excited, you know, several years ago, we started looking at how do we make our programs, the synergy of our programs match the synergy of the region? And then if you look at Hermitage, around Hermitage, you have most, 90% of your major health and medical hospitals, doctor's office services are within a 10-mile radius of Hermitage A Center. So what we intend to do is move our health and medical programs to that area. Matter of fact, yesterday I was in conversation with a group, the Claude Moore Foundation, and I was explaining why we were doing this, and they were so excited to see the vision of the county to put it so that the business could come to the center and the center would have access to all the opportunities locally. So basically, Hermitage, and that was part of the proposal of the specialty center at Hermitage is because of the health and medical opportunities that are available and the opportunity to place all the equipment, all the resources there so students could have exposure to those many different pathways.
Okay, thank you for that. And then something when, I know I recently have the privilege to go through the Hermitage A Center with my kids, and something that I always hear when I'm there is the soft skills. And I just hear that focused on so much more when I'm involved with ACE than I do anywhere else, and I'm just wondering if we could somehow incorporate soft skills into our other programming as well, because those aren't just, soft skills aren't just for ACE students, they're life skills. So if I could just go on the record with that and ask for us to try to incorporate that into our curriculum somehow? And then, is it our goal, I know as you're talking about kind of the multi-track pathways with our new center at Hermitage, is that our goal so that students have more pathways within, whether it's a specialty center or a CTE program? Is that our ultimate goal here, and are we there yet?
We're not there yet, but I think that is the goal we're striving for because, you know, my optic vision of understanding that students may start out wanting A and end up deciding C is where they want to go, but without the exposure and opportunity to see that, and that's also the important piece of that K-12 career planning. Students often don't know what they don't know until they're exposed to the opportunity to learn about it. So having the students start early, friends that you might be, think you want to be a surgeon, but find out you can't cut into a person or whatever. So there's other opportunities that are just as needed surgical texts, so having the exposure and connection so that it all fits together. But also, that will simulate a real-world environment because there's not an occupation out there right now that works in isolation. So if these, as we're looking at our centers to get their students truly life and career-ready on a global aspect, we have to expose them to working in teams with all sorts of opportunities.
Right, and that's, and you're talking about skills, no matter whether you're in a center or a CTE, no matter whether you're employed, enlisted, or enrolled, am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to my next presentation, which is all gonna be about how we're gonna achieve more equitable enrollment with our applications, our programming, resources, relevancy. I can't wait. Thank you so much for all the work y'all have done to get us here. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cancela. Ms. Atkins?
Thank you. So I'll start with thanking the Chamber, Chamber RVA, Henrico Education Foundation for funding and partnerships in this collaborative effort. Also thank the both of you for this high school redesign journey. I did have an opportunity to review the key finding and recommendations at a very high level. I certainly will need to go back and do a deeper dive, but from what I did read, I did find it insightful and I found it valuable. I also participated in some of the discussions. I participated as a school board member, and then I also participated as a mom of students in Henrico County Public Schools, and I really appreciated the opportunity to do that and to have some really productive conversations. And so it was quite wonderful to see some of the results of that. I'm curious to know if Ford NGL and their representative share it with you if they considered any impact of the resources in the communities and if there is a connection to career paths? I know in one of the discussions we had, it came up a little bit, and I was wondering if you just, if you knew how that tied into the recommendations, because I am a firm believer about exposure. And, you know, in students choosing career paths, sometimes if you've not been exposed to certain businesses, companies that may be in your community, it may not be on your radar as a career path. And so I remember that coming up and curious if, how that was infused into the results.
So I think, you know, some of what we learned from the Ford NGL report, and Mr. Bayton alluded to this earlier in talking about the Hermitage Specialty Center, was the need to really create synergy around, you know, businesses that exist within the school's community. So that was, you know, one of our major takeaways. But to your point, yes, exposure and access is critically important. So one of the things that we hope to accomplish through this whole high school redesign process is to ensure that, you know, all students have access and exposure to different opportunities, to, you know, connections with different employers and businesses, whether it's through job shadowing or, you know, having professionals come into the building to talk to students about, you know, different professions and the different pathways they can take. You know, for example, when people hear health profession, they automatically think doctor, but if you spend some time talking to Mr. Bayton, you'll learn about a thousand other careers within the health field. So it is one of our goals to truly expose students to all that's out there so they can make more informed decisions along their personal journeys.
Thank you for that, and I'm sure we're gonna learn more about that in the next presentation, but I was curious and wanted to ask why you're here. The other question I had is, and keep me candid, because I might have missed when you were talking about social, emotional, and I'm curious as to what measures will be used to declare that social and emotional needs are met?
Well, primarily through relationships with students, you know, at different levels. So, you know, teacher-student, counselor-student, administrator-student, and also connecting with parents. So when we talked about, you know, the need for more social, emotional support, I think this year has really taught us a lot. It's taught us about the need to be more targeted and to provide individualized support to students in a more structured format through the creation of, you know, re-engagement teams, take more of a community approach. So again, starts with, you know, teacher at that first level, then counselor and administrator, and identifying, you know, what a student's needs are, whether it's academic, social, and emotional, and if there are needs beyond the school, then connecting a student and a family with outside resources, again, which you'll hear more about in the May presentation from Student Support and Wellness in terms of, you know, additional wraparound supports and resources for families that our schools may not have in our buildings.
Thank you for sharing that because that just tuned right on in when we use words like we're going to declare that social and emotional needs are met. And so I was curious to learn more about what that means, and to your point, I will be learning more about that when we actually confirm and declare that we've done that. I just zoned right on in. So look forward to more on that. And last, I am extremely excited about the center of Verona High School and really taking a look at all the beauty that Verona, Sanson, and Howland Springs has to offer in land and natural resources, access to the river. And when we think about sustainability, when we're thinking about jobs of the future, environmental science is so much more than environmental science, right? When we're thinking about our planet, what a wonderful location that Verona sits in that has access to all of these rich resources that will allow students to just walk outside to do their homework, to do their research, to learn more, and many of them know a lot. And to match... And to match that with the academic pieces, I think are very fruitful. So equally excited about that, as well as the partnerships that we are going to develop. I, I think that, what a glorious opportunity, because I am not aware of any other center, and I'm hopeful that you'll share that with me if there are, that's in close proximity that would even offer that in order to get an associate's degree at a high school, you know, from a high school level. So very excited to learn more about that piece. So kudos to the both of you and your teams in moving forward in that way. And I look forward to receiving additional details. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Shea?
Thank you, Reverend, thank you, Reverend Cooper. Like some of my colleagues, I would be remiss if I didn't open up with the, just the true appreciation to the Chamber and Hef for funding this third-party assessment. Not only is it an external look at kind of what we, we are so ingrained in every day, it's by a group that is really trained at looking at these processes across the count, across the country and can yield us some really good results. I spent some time this week with the 80-page report that they sent us, which was, which truly was helpful, because as y'all shared some snippets of, it highlighted our strengths, it showed some of our challenges, and it gave us recommendations. But it not only did that for a countywide, it also did it for each one of our specialty centers. Because while, you know, we have this county-wide specialty program, each one of our centers looks very different. And so I think that is just absolutely invaluable as we continue to assess ourselves and figure out the direction we're going. We need to understand where we truly are now, not where we think we are. And so the funding from the Chamber and Hef, I mean, it's really an integral part of making sure we're going where we need to go, and I thank them for that. As the other board members have shared, we got to have a one-on-one with the Ford NGL group as well as some other information. And as I dug in more to the Career Academies piece, you know, I really just kept coming back to our own CTE programs, and I'm a little biased because I serve on our CTE board with Mac. But, I mean, they truly are top-notch, and we have a national thought leader when it comes to CTE in Mr. Baiton. And I don't know how anyone, anywhere can do it better and have more of a vision than he does. And so, you know, when I, I read the report and I, you know, processed that information together with the, the conversations from earlier, I think the direction we're headed and opportunity for improvement for both our fantastic CTE programs and our great specialty centers is, is how they can collaborate, right? And how they can partner alongside of each other, working parallel. Because both of them, in many cases, are getting our students to the same destination. They're just a different path to get there, to, to reference that 16-lane quote y'all had from Matthew McConaughey. And so one thing I would like to see, and I know we've talked about this in our CTE board, is as our students, particularly in middle school, are looking at their options for specialty centers, I would love for them to have essentially a one-pager that not only lists our specialty centers, but also our CTE programs and our elective offerings in the classes that all overlap. And so instead of listing them by location, I think it would be really beneficial for all of our stakeholders for, to list it by topic. So for example, one box would have the Godwin Medical Sciences Program, the new Herm Health and Medical, the ACE EMT Program, those sorts of things. So students can see where their passions align and that we have so many lanes to get there. And so if you want to go pre-med, there's not just one path, that there is, you know, a more lab sciences path, or there's a more hands-on path, or if you love your high school and want to stay associated with your homeschool, there's paths. We have these paths, we just need to make sure our students and our parents alike recognize that they can all lead to the same destination. So, sorry, I'll get off my little soapbox on that. And digging, just briefly and quickly to some details, I'll spare you my enthusiasm for interdisciplinary courses, because I went on a whole diatribe on that last year and how much I just give it all the jazz hands of excitement. When we look at, talking a little bit, referring to Mrs. Ogborne's point and a point made in the presentation about expanding access to IB, but also expanding access to programs, like Ms. Cancela, I'll point it out, the elephant in the room that makes us all cringe. But changing seat allocation impacts capacity. And if we're going to be doing redistricting in the fall, we need to understand what kind of capacity changes may be coming down the pipe. So, you know, if we're going to be looking at expanding seats or reallocating seats, I would really like that to be on the front end of some of the considerations so that we have that information going into the fall. And I'll double down with Mr. Doussault and April about the middle school seat allocation as well. I just slip that in whenever I can, having that on the front end. Dual enrollment is a great point. I hear about that often. I think what our community doesn't understand is the extra credentialing that teachers have to have to teach dual enrollment. It's different than AP or even IB. You require master's credits, not in education, but in that specific coursework. So I think the retain, the recruitment of teachers in that is going to be hard, and bless you for tracking that down. But I, I wanted the community to hear, it's not just as simple as, oh, I want dual enrollment, and I have an AP physics teacher. Sure, they can teach a, you know, dual enrollment physics. That's actually not, not how it works. When looking at our two new centers, can I ask, when the planning of this was coming along, did you first decide on the locations and then decide what they were going to be for those synergies? Or did you just look at gaps in our programming and then decide what locations they would be best at?
It was really focusing on gaps in our programming. And I'll use health and medical for example. Eight of the 10 fastest-growing careers are in the health and medical field. So you have to look at, you know, right now, air programs.
Can you speak into the mic?
There we go. Thank you. Eight of the 10 fastest-growing careers are in the health and medical area, and air options were limited. That's also a program that we have the highest number of students waiting to get in. Now, do every one of those students want to be in EMT? Absolutely not. They're just trying to get into the medical profession pathway. So what we were able to do by adding the, this proposed specialty center in Hermitage, along with the Hermitage ACE expansion, offer more opportunities to have them, give them a chance to enhance their understanding of those different prongs of that career pathway. When you look at Verona, as Ms. Atkins said, there's not another location that has access to that. And when you look at the, you know, sustainability of the environmental resources in the future, that is going to be next in line with the health and medical field as far as opportunities for our young people.
No, I appreciate that, that insight. I spent quite a lot of time this morning, or this week, looking into our specialty center data courtesy of Dr. Farrell, who shared it with me, and it was just delightful to like dig all into it. But what I found is that there's a really strong correlation between geographic proximity and the specialty centers that our students choose. And so I think that it will be interesting to see that, how that plays into our new centers as well. But you're absolutely right, the, the medical center at Godwin, that's actually kind of the outlier when we look at geographic proximity playing into the applications, has, you know, the highest waitlist. And so, you know, perhaps this can provide, you know, yet another lane to get to the same place that doesn't fit the same niche, if you will, of that. So I appreciate you sharing with us. And then from a capacity standpoint, also beneficial that Hermitage has capacity, is that correct, Ms. Cancela? Yeah. And then I know Verona has some capacity as well that will be able to fit the, the programs there. And then the synergies, like, like you said. On, not that you have to go here, but on Slide 19, number three, it referred to, let me pull it up so I can read it exactly. Each high school will review specialty center programming to identify courses to benefit all high school students. Is this hinting that we may be able to provide access to specialty center electives for students in the high school that's not, that aren't in the center?
Yes. And we currently do in some cases, in some of our high schools. So that's something that we're looking to expand. And I'll just share with you, Mrs. Shea, next year, Godwin is going to offer a biostatistics class through the specialty center that's going to be available to all students that attend Godwin High School.
Wonderful. Maybe I can enroll, because I love my statistics. That was a joke. All right. And then, just wrapping it up, when you talk about the new application process, is it going to be like a common app, if you will? You know, you have your college common app, is it going to be a common app for specialty centers?
That's a great question. What I'd really like to do is get the feedback from our stakeholders to, you know, just see what folks are saying. And among our stakeholders are teachers, specialty center directors, principals that said high school, school council directors, middle school, middle school council directors, middle school teachers, parents, students, and the like. So I really want to get the feedback to see what our folks are saying before we determine what direction we want to go in. I will say that we would like to have a cleaner, transparent process so that families and students understand what the target is. Now, that doesn't mean because you hit the target, you'll get in, because we do have space limitations. But I'd like for everyone to be on, you know, equal ground, equal footing, and have a, an understanding of what it takes to get into a center.
That's fantastic. I think that transparency, I, I know you and I have both gotten some feedback about that, so I appreciate that. And then I'll just advocate, if it does look more like a common app for our specialty centers, you know, continue to work with Mr. Baiton if we can roll in some of that early admission CTE into some of that programming. Because as I didn't know, and I found out this month, that our eighth, some of our eighth graders are getting early admission to CTE. And so as a ninth grader going into ninth grade, they're not starting the CTE program at Herm or Highland Springs, but they know that it's coming, and I think that's really exciting for them. And so if we could bundle those together, I think then again, it reiterates that it's lots of different pathways towards some of the same goals. Wrapping up, I promise, Ms. Ogborne talked about partnerships, I will put in a plug. The Business Advisory Council is always looking for partnerships. They're working really hard to expand our partnerships. If any board members ever want to come to one of our meetings, or you have connections that want to partner with the schools, I know Mr. Baiton is actively waiting that. Ms. Cancela attends often with us as well. Ms. Cancela opened the door to GPA, which is a little bit of a right term, but I'll share, I have really strong feelings about GPA. So when y'all get there, I would just love a phone call and a chat at revamping how we do GPA. I know that is something when Ms. Cancela and I were on the lay advisory committee together, it came up very frequently, including the dichotomy between the specialty center students and the non-specialty center students in the high schools. And there's a lot there, so I'll just throw that there. And then lastly, I just want to affirm what Mr. Baiton was saying about opportunities, right? You come in as A and you think you're going to be, and you end up as C or Z. And like, that just can't be more true for our students in middle school, high school, college, like all the way around. I, I went into college knowing I wanted to be a physics teacher, right? That was path A. I deviated into lab physics, and I spent a summer doing particle, or carbon nanostructure research, and it just didn't bring me joy. And so I got back to my physics teacher-ing, which brought me joy. But without those experiences, without those opportunities to explore those other lanes, it's really hard for our students to know that they're headed to the destination they want. And so I just really affirm all the opportunities we bring our students, and I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea. Quickly, I don't, I wanted to ask a few questions, kind of piggybacking on that last statement. For the interdisciplinary courses and cross-curricular experiences, could you kind of give me an idea of what that would look like for all of our high schools?
So when we talk about courses, you know, Tucker and Highland Springs piloted a total of three courses this year. JR Tucker, for example, piloted, you know, what we call an EnviroFit, where students have a, an environmental science teacher and also a health and PE non-teacher who collaborate around curriculum to ensure alignment between the two courses, sharing common students. So throughout their ninth grade PE class, and also throughout the environmental science class, there's bits and pieces of both curriculums being embedded, embedded, excuse me. Now with cross-curricular, that's really taking a singular course, say for example, a math class, and infusing something like art into that curriculum to provide students, you know, more of a real-world, relevant, high-interest experience.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Another question, could you speak to the level of student involvement and collaboration in the planning of our high school redesign? And were there any students on any of the advisory councils?
That's going to be next steps. We first wanted to get some sort of a structure down. Going into the 21, 22 school year, there will be, you know, a lot of student voice as a part of this process. I will say that we did have some students participate on our API-B dual enrollment committees that were led by different administrators in all of our high schools. So there was a lot of student voice as a part of that particular committee. But in terms of this entire presentation, going into 21, 22, there will be an abundance of student voice.
Okay. Thank you so much. You also stressed and stated the goal of increased enrollment. Can you kind of share with me the numbers of increased enrollments? Do we even have that number or what we're trying to attain, what we're trying to improve?
Right. So I don't, I don't have the numbers with me, but when we look at specialized programming, a goal is at the very least to have, you know, the percentage of students in, say, AP courses match your county demographics. So if we have, you know, 35-point-whatever percent of African-American students who attend Henrico County Public Schools, at the very least, you want 35-point-whatever percentage of African-American students to participate in advanced placement courses.
Well, I think that's a very important point to make as far as the reflecting your population and your demographic. So hopefully we can achieve that goal. At least we know where we're trying to go to, and we can kind of work toward that. In that same vein, how, when you made the comment about marginalized groups, how are we breaking down marginalized groups?
You want to know like the specific?
Like, what are we using to determine marginalized groups?
Socioeconomic status, minority students, so African-American, Hispanic students, are just exceptional education, students who, according to our data, have not traditionally participated in advanced placement courses at a, at a high level.
Thank you.
High participation rate, sorry.
Okay. And so in that same vein, with, with the expansion of our specialty centers, are we, are we focusing on the passions that the students have, or are we just kind of trying to gear it toward their post-high school opportunities? I mean, or are we doing it in synthesis? Or how does that play into?
Well, both. I mean, we, it starts with student passion, and, and also the goal is to help students along their personal journey and pathway towards whatever they decide, desire to do at the high school. So yes, we're looking at passions, but also making sure that all of our students are life-ready when they leave Henrico County Public Schools with the high school diploma.
Mac, did you want to say something? I see you kind of.
Well, I was going to, you know, when you think about the passion, and I date myself, but the first specialty center, and, and Dr. Farrell's heard me say this before, was the Center for Performing Arts at Henrico High School. What made that center special? It gave those students that were, wanted to immerse themselves in the arts, an opportunity to really blossom in that field, a place where no other, they couldn't do it inside the comprehensive school from anywhere else in the county. So that was the draw for the students to get there. They may not have been the, part of the, going with that passion is, once that passion ignites, the rest comes. They get excited about learning, and they can, are able to apply all the academics that they're learning to that passion. So as, as Dr. Farrell said, it is both. But it's got to start with the passion, and it's incumbent upon us as educators to help them, help, help the students ignite that light early on in elementary school so they're prepared for that as they move to high school.
Well, I agree. I think that, that correlation and that connectivity from the earlier as far as identification and immersion helps to, you know, the continuing from elementary to high school. Because I asked that question because I think it is dualistic, right? I do think it has to be homogenized in regards to the passion and also the purpose, and then therefore you can live that, and you'll be passionate about it. So thank you. then therefore, you can live that, and you'll be passionate about it. So thank you. I appreciate it. And I look forward to getting those, seeing those numbers. And as everyone else has stated, the evolution of this. And I'm excited about participation of our students in the process. So thank you, Dr. Farrell. Thank you, Ms. Baton. If there are no more questions from my peers, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the board's outstanding feedback and questions. We look forward to continuing this journey. It was appropriate. They chose a journey theme there as this is a, certainly a pathway that we've got miles yet to travel, but we're excited to continue to share with the board on next steps. The next item I have for the board is to provide first an overview, and then I'm going to be seeking your acceptance of our CRSSA, which is the Coronavirus Response Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, funding through the, what's known as ESER II funding. So looking for you to accept that. But prior to my seeking your acceptance of that grant funding, Mr. Wack is here to provide an overview of the funding, how it will be spent.
Is this Mr. Wack's first time presenting to us?
I believe it is. You're in for a treat. And welcome.
Well, I speak on behalf of my peers. We're happy to have you. I'm looking forward to your work with our division. And thank you again for taking on this Herculean task.
Well, thank you, sir. If, board members, if you enjoyed the previous items, accepting funds, you're going to really enjoy this one. So this afternoon, I have a brief presentation on the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, or ESER funds, primarily focusing on the ESER II grant award that we recently received notification. So the board may recall last June, we accepted $9.45 million as our ESER I allocation. Those funds are available for reimbursement of allowable expenditures incurred from March 2020 through September of 2022. Of that $9.45 million, approximately $600,000 was set aside for equity, equity services provided by private schools. And of the remaining $8.6 million, we had either spent or encumbered about $6.2 million as of the beginning of last week. Today, we're here to focus on our ESER II award. We have about $34.87 million that we can use for allowable expenditures incurred from March 2020 through September of 23. Finally, we are expecting a final notification of our ESER III award. Late in March, we received an email indicating we are estimated to receive $78.3 million. And those funds can be used for allowable expenditures through September of 2024. So when speaking to the purpose and use of ESER funds, these are emergency relief funds intended to address the impact of COVID-19 on elementary and secondary schools. The Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act does include the allowable uses of ESER funds specified under the CARES Act. Now, these funds may take the place of state or local funds for allowable activities, although states are required to maintain a certain level of effort. And the full list of allowable uses for ESER II funds were provided as attachment D to Superintendent's Memo 1221, which was, was distributed in late January. Looking at attachment D, some of the specific allowable uses include purchasing educational technology that aids student interaction, providing mental health services and supports, providing summer learning and supplemental after-school programs, addressing learning loss among students, and repairing and/or improving school facilities to reduce risk of transmission of the virus and to support student health. In getting to our overall spending plan that was developed by Henrico County Public School staff, we are essentially allocating about a quarter of these funds for personnel, approximately half for operational and capital needs, and the final quarter for instructional resources. So starting with the, the personnel portion, our spending plan includes $8.56 million to cover two fiscal years' worth of, of funding for 15 elementary reading specialists to address our literacy rate deficiencies that have been exacerbated by the pandemic, 30 school counselors to address, help address mental health issues, but also to, as the year three of a multi-year plan, to address standards of quality minimum staffing levels. And also 13 elementary library assistants also were part of year three of a multi-year plan to address standards of quality minimum staffing levels. So this $8.56 million will give the, the county's local economy time to grow and recover from, from the impacts of the pandemic. And will also, I believe, give us the opportunity to maybe set aside some, some, some operating reserves to maintain these positions long-term for the schools. And this, and of course, the, the school board will recognize all 58 of those positions were included in the fiscal year 2021 recommended budget that you had approved prior to the pandemic. Shifting to operations, we plan to purchase 52 buses for approximately $6 million to, with climate control and seat belts, to assist with summer school and additional bus routes that are required due to social distancing requirements. We're going to spend about $280,000 on 10 minivans to support the transport of exceptional education and McKinny Vento students, also reducing the risk of transmission. Just over $1 million for hotspots for students and added bandwidth to support remote learning. And about $400,000 for air filters and air purifiers that will improve the air quality in all, all of our school facilities. We also plan to spend $1.45 million on security vestibules for 10 schools. That will help us address distancing protocols and control our space utilization. About $1.39 million for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning repairs, and building automation systems at five schools. And finally, $6.62 million to replace HVAC units at nine school facilities. So overall, that's $17.16 million for operations, or approximately two, a half of our ESER II allocation. In terms of instructional resources, we do plan to set aside $1.9 million for summer school instruction and transportation. We're going to be spending an additional portion of the $9.15 million in this category for pre-K through 12 literacy program materials. And we have a number of other intervention instructional resources, primarily of electronic nature, to, to assist with the, the instruction in the coming school year. So in terms of looking back and looking forward, as I previously mentioned, on January 22, we received Superintendent's Memo 1221 announcing the fund, the ESER II funding. All school divisions were required to submit an, a funding application. We did submit our initial application on April 14 to the Virginia Department of Education. We do understand, because this is a two-and-a-half-year spending plan, that we will have to make some, some revisions and amendments over time. But I'm before you today to, to ask the school board to accept the $34.87 million. And with, with that acceptance, we'll, we'll work with the, the county manager's office to seek the introduction of a $34.87 million budget amendment. Due to the magnitude of that budget amendment, a public hearing will be required by the Board of Supervisors, so that, that would have to be adopted at a subsequent board meeting. In terms of the, the additional detail information, I did mention, we have the link posted here on Slide 10 for Superintendent's Memo 1221. And more specifically, the full list of allowable uses is in attachment D to, to Memo 1221. That concludes my brief presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm going to start to my right, Ms. Cancela.
Oh, I couldn't be more excited about this ESER II grant. But when I look at, and for some of the folks watching that I know follow us closely, and I bet you they saw some capital projects, like our HVAC, our buses, and some of our, not necessarily the air purifiers, but for sure, our buses, our vestibules have been on our CIP, and our buses. So this is additional, or this is, are we going to have to give any, are we going to have to give any money back to the county side? Because we've received this money? I mean, I'm just trying to connect dots for folks at home that explain, if you could explain how this works.
Yes. So some of these were preview, were funded in the CIP that was just adopted. Of course, a lot of these things we've shown in long-range CIPs, which have only been, again, funded year by year. But you're right, there was just a CIP approved by the Board of Supervisors that included some funding for buses. So in this case, it, it may provide an opportunity, if we cover the cost here, to create a reserve, if you will, of those funds not expensed differently. But Mr. Wack can tackle that question.
I mean, is it just the timing of the funds and how we're using them? Or are we actually getting additional buses because of this?
So many of the items on the operations and capital list are, are, have been requests in years and not necessarily specifically funded. If you look at the, the capital improvement program just adopted by, by the Board of Supervisors, there is specifically $4.7 million per year in each of the upcoming five years for buses. So if, if we are essentially able to, to cover the, the first year of that plan, that may free up some, some funds in, in the county's general fund. And the superintendent and I can, can work with the, with the county administration to see if we might be able to reserve some of the, some of those funds for school operations. But this is obviously, the, the $6 million is more than the $4.7 that, than it had provided. So that's going to really let us get a, get a jump start.
That's certainly a win. That's certainly a win. And, and I have to say for, again, for, for those who have followed the budget last year, our amazing budget that we put forward, and then the pandemic happened, and we had to slash it, we're getting closer and closer to getting our want list back. I mean, being able to fund the 30, the reading positions and the counselor positions. And I would just ask us to consider, if there was any extra money, perhaps, if maybe some of our math was wrong, which I know it wouldn't be. But if there was any extra money because of the, we, we've just said it over and over today about the social emotional supports, and how important wellness is to us. And, you know, I just attended the National School Board Conference over break, virtually. And it was amazing how everyone was talking about, from student to school board member, you know, you are carrying weight from the past year. And we all were carrying things in our backpack before the pandemic. But I can't emphasize enough how important it is for me, and I think for us as a division, that we are ready for, for everything that folks are going to be carrying back in our buildings, whether they're coming to our Henrico Virtual Academy in the fall, or whether they're coming back to us in person. I mean, we, we had trauma before. And I just really want us to be ready. And, you know, I see elementary counselors, but I don't see additional middle school counselors. I know, you know, we've got social workers. We, you know, can we somehow have learning coaches doing different things? I mean, I just cannot emphasize enough, I mean, school psychologists, or can we hire any more of those? Where are those on our list? Because I think that folks in the community don't understand how much time with, with testing and child studies our actual, our actual school psychologists do. Again, I just wanted to bring social emotional supports to the forefront, especially at the secondary, because I see, you know, 30 school counselors, if I'm not mistaken, those are elementary, correct? Dr. Cashwell?
Well, we'll be looking at our staffing to student ratios, you know, as, we'll want to make sure we're in compliance with the new SOQ related to the student-to-counselor ratio and divide them accordingly. But a majority, particularly when you talk about the budget pre-COVID that went forward, a majority of the counselors in this ask were designed to help meet needs at the elementary level. And that doesn't mean we don't have needs beyond that. So we'll, we'll continue to.
And, and as we do that, just, this is not really a financial comment, but if we don't have the financial wherewithal to hire some of these additional resources, I'd ask us to think about what partners do we have, and what crisis plans for the fall do we have to help support, you know, all of our students and staff as they return to the building. And then on a separate note, I see so many of other great things funded by this grant. And I know that with the last budget, another major talking point was about career ladders. And this maybe wouldn't be for you, Mr. Wack, though I really appreciated you presenting to us for the first time. Maybe Dr. Cashwell could speak to how some of the components of the career ladders actually have been addressed, just maybe not in the way that some of our, some of our employees would understand at this point.
Sure. Yeah, some may recall that, again, that pre-COVID budget, as we're calling it, the year that we put forward, looking at implementing the first stages of a career ladders program. And that had to do a lot with things like professional development and teachers earning different designations that then had some sort of fiscal implication. And also, I know that those who were following the compression relief may remember that there was a continual cycle for looking at compression. And so with the budget restoration this year, we were so pleased to see compensation addressed. And, and some of the compensation work that went into this current year's budget was taking that second look at compression. And, and then, of course, you know, there was the cross-the-board race for, for all employees. And then there was a specific look for many employees related to their compensation based on where they are on the scale. And then even that longevity piece. So that kind of has to do with what the ladders were looking to do. So a, a bit of that was addressed. But certainly, many of the hallmarks of the career ladder plan, we're still working on implementing that, that weren't necessarily fiscally associated, but around making sure that we're providing robust professional learning opportunities for teachers to grow professionally as, as we want to provide those opportunities.
Great. Thank you for explaining and clarifying how we really have addressed. So we've almost addressed everything that we put forward in our original budget last year. Thank you so much for your presentation. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Cancela. Ms. Shea.
Thank you. Mr. Wack, it's so great to see you at the podium. We are excited to see you. And that we got a little glimpse of your face. We kind of chuckled that, like, one of our deputy clerks that was hired during COVID, you know, we don't really know what the rest of your face looks like. So it's, these are the little things that make us excited. All right. So piggybacking on what Ms. Cancela said is, we have restored a lot of those really essential positions that were in our 2020 pre-COVID budget. One big omission that I see there is we had eight positions that are currently resource teachers that we were going to convert to ASPs. For context, this is in our elementary schools, our smallest elementary schools, that only have a principal as a designated administrator. So what do we need to do to get those eight positions on that list?
So my understanding is that, that would be an incremental cost of about approximately $400,000 to extend the contracts of certain employees to, to make them, them 12-month employees. But, but in terms of, I don't believe that, that's funded in, in this particular plan. But we are going to be working with the, with the county administration. We will be, in fiscal year 22, we are going to receive quarterly appropriations. We will be on this, even on the school side, working on, on quarterly budget projections. But that's something that'll be working with Dr. Cashwell to.
Thank you. And when I was looking at the reviewing what the ESER funds can be used for, it didn't look like those administrative costs are things that ESER could be used for. But perhaps with some of our other savings, we could have an addition to our general fund in order to cover that. So on that note, did you say that it's possible that we could have somewhere around a $4 million and change savings for the county government for these items like buses and HVAC that they were going to cover in the CIP but are now covered by ESER II?
So the next steps in the process will be to introduce the budget amendment, and then, then after a public hearing, the Board of Supervisors would adopt that. But like, as I mentioned, there, the, the, the five-year capital improvement program that, that they've approved has $4.7 million specifically per year. So I don't think we've got to the point of, like, what, what, what portion might be deferred or unspent balance reserved a year on. But that, that is something that, that we can work with the, with the county administration to, to determine how, how we would revise that spending plan. I, I believe when, when the schools made the request for fiscal year 22, we requested over $6 million for, for buses. The county only included $4.7 in, in the plan due to limited resources. So that, again, something that, that's going to be forthcoming in the, in the upcoming weeks.
Good. Well, you work your angle. I will, at our chair vice chair meeting, see, see what we can get done. You know, while it sounds small, eight positions and then being administrative positions, it impacts a quarter of the elementary schools in my district. And when we look at some of our strategic plan goals to recruit, retain, and reward our educators, this is a key part. And this is recognizing and And this is recognizing and compensating eight individuals who are completing the duties of an administrator but are being compensated on a teacher's scale. I was talking to some elementary school teachers, actually yesterday, and they were sharing that what they're seeing with their students this nine weeks, it's not actually the academic gaps that are the largest, it's the social emotional gaps that are the largest. And that these resource teachers in their role as kind of acting ASP, but without the title or the compensation, they are an essential part of these schools bandwidth in order to provide the social emotional support and administrative support that we need. So I will continue to advocate on this. I appreciate your help with that as well. And then for those listening, I just, Mr. Pritchard and I talked earlier this week and I appreciate his, his clarification. These security vestibules are in addition to the meals tax, security vestibules, correct? Okay, he's giving me the big nod. So I know this is important to quite a few schools in my district, but one in particular. And so I know they'll be happy to know that those projects are moving forward. So excited about the money.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea. Ms. Ogden.
It's a good way to start your job. I mean, seriously, of having this, this is a great problem to have. Sorry for the reason that we have it, of course, but it is, obviously, the theme of the day has been meeting needs. And this is just another example. One of the things I was very glad to see was literacy materials on this list. Oftentimes when you, you have big budget items that need to be attended to, those individual things like literacy materials and the small things that go directly to our teachers in meeting the needs of students get left off. So I was really glad not to see that happen. But I'm most excited about our reading specialists. We have talked about this as a board, that literacy is such an important thing. You know, we want to be the, the district that's meeting our literacy needs of our students, and this is such an essential way to do it. When you look at what other counties have with reading specialists, the fact that we don't have a reading specialist at every elementary school is still a thing that I think we are working really hard to correct, and I'm glad we're headed that way. But I couldn't agree more with Ms. Consella and Ms. Shea with what they said about where we're going with this. And so I appreciate any advocacy to the Board of Supervisors to work all the numbers out. And, and again, we're, we're going to them with an interesting thing that we need to figure out and how we fine tune this list and then what changes happen after that will be sort of staying tuned. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Ms. Atkins.
Well, welcome, welcome, welcome. I'm glad to see you at the podium and sharing such great information and news to us. I concur with most of all that was said here. The one thought that I've wanted to share is in thinking about families and students returning to our buildings and looking at, you know, the list that we have here, and of course, discussions will still continue. I would hope that we also include when we're thinking about resources and, you know, socially, emotional or mental, just overall well-being, mental and physical, because the physical piece is equally as important. There has been a lot of trauma that impacts us mentally, which can transition to us physically. And so I'm hopeful that we think about our PE teachers and other individuals that are involved in our physical well-being as well when we think about resources. I'm hopeful that we'll also think about family and community engagement when we think about resources, along with our counselors, as think about our family advocates and the work that the family advocates have done and that they, what they will continue to do, not just supporting the student, but resources that support the family. I think that's a critical piece in a conversation that needs to continue in how our family advocates, roles and responsibilities, how they're used within the building, as well as with families and expansion of resources and support for families as, as we move forward to the fall. Another piece is around prevention, thinking about those resources that assist with prevention. I'm thinking about attendance. It's important that every school does not have an attendance officer. And Dr. Cashwell, keep me honest if we do. But if you can't get the kid in the building, how do they learn? I think it's critically important that we have attendance officers, right along with the reading specialist. And so hopefully we'll continue those conversations in those categories, well-being, physical and mental, looking at family and community engagement, specifically our family advocates and that particular team and expansion of that, right along with attendance officers as well. So you are here in a very good state and having a very good conversation when we're talking about additional monies. So thank you very much.
Thank you again, Dr. Cashwell.
All right. Well, if we've answered all your questions, then I am seeking the board's acceptance of these funds, the CRRA and ESSER2 funding in the amount of $34,872,307.47 for Henrico County Public Schools.
Can, can we all do it?
It didn't work last time.
I know. We tried, we tried.
A great point of order. Is there a motion to accept funding of $34,872,307.47 allocated to HCPS?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the funding has been accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Wack. Thank you, members of the board. For the next item, I am asking that the board award a contract to DSI in the amount of $4,819,633.71 for Cisco network infrastructure for our middle schools. And this is pursuant to an RFP that's previously been presented to you. And so Mr. Maddox is going to provide you a, a presentation again as I seek to have you award that contract.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board and Dr. Cashwell. Today I'm returning, seeking your approval for award for two contracts, the first being the middle school network infrastructure refresh and the second is the high school student and staff laptop and infrastructure refresh. The middle school network refresh proposal contract was finished, has finished the contract review process with Henrico County Legal and the awarded offers legal team. Today's brief update will review the request for proposal for network infrastructure in middle schools and administrative locations. The current middle school network refresh and related contract presented today for approval covers all network infrastructure required to enable connectivity in all middle schools, plus 14 other program sites and division office locations. The network in schools and offices are refreshed approximately every six to seven years to ensure the network is up to date. And the current network design we have under the current ending lease is one Wi-Fi connection shared between classrooms with expanded signal coverage for classrooms without an access point. And the prior refresh efforts, non-traditional learning spaces like cafeterias and gyms and auditoriums were not included to provide Wi-Fi coverage. However, under the current proposal and related contract that is scoped to have a strong and reliable Wi-Fi signal in every classroom with a dedicated access point for that classroom and also in common areas such as gymnasiums, cafeterias and auditoriums, so learning and work can continue anytime, anyplace. And below, of course, is, so it was previously shared, the, the current timeline up until today, which is the contract award request. So to review, this is the proposed timeline and the statement of work with the offer. Any network refresh efforts over the summer will guarantee that all school programming and related instructional events are priority to avoid any disruptions in learning. And here again, just to share is the evaluation criteria for the RFP process. And you can see here again that, as shared before, in February, pricing is weighted the heaviest because of the E-rate regulations that we were pursuing at the time. So I want to share, the selection committee has recommended DYSIS Solutions to be awarded the contract for the proposal of Cisco Network Solution for middle schools and other division locations, which were considered by the committee. DYSIS's offer was on target with all the technical requirements we had and defined in the RFP expectations, and the overall cost was in line with expectations as well. The original, and this is a change from February, what I shared, the original financing plan presented in February to the school board was a lease option over six years. And in the past month or so, county administration has partnered with the school division's finance team to provide complete funding for a one-time payment covering the full refresh effort, which is fantastic news. The school division greatly appreciates county administration's flexibility with the school's FY '21 budget to make the funding option possible. And the result of this is an interest savings of about $158,000. So by paying for everything upfront as a one-time, we're not going to be pursuing the lease, of course, so we're saving some money, which is fantastic. The resulting total cost of this engagement is just under $4.82 million, as you see here on the left, compared to a cost of the prior lease that was ending, which was $5.114 million. You can see there's a savings of approximately 300K there, which is fantastic. So the recommendation from the, from the committee is an award of contract to DYSIS for Cisco network hardware, including implementation and all related services for all middle schools and other included division sites under a one-time purchase of $4.819,633.71. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the middle school network refresh.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox. Ms., Ms. Atkins.
Thank you so much for your presentation. No questions at this time.
Thank you, Madam. Ms. Ogden.
No questions.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Mrs. Consella.
I'm good.
Thank you so much, Mr. Maddox. You probably are happy that you had the easiest presentation all day.
Probably the fastest, too.
I think he's got one more to go, but, so I'll have him stay there. But I will ask that the board award a contract to DSI in the amount of $4,819,633.71 for Cisco network infrastructure for middle schools and other program and administrative sites pursuant to RFP number 20-2080-11 EMF, DSI's proposal, DSI's best and final offer and the contact, contract documents negotiated by the parties. I'm also recommending that the school board authorize the chair, superintendent and the county attorney to execute all documents in a form approved by the county attorney necessary for the purchase and acquisition of networking hardware and related services.
I'm so glad I don't have to repeat all that. Is there a motion to award the contract?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right. The ayes have it, the contract has been awarded.
All right. Next, I have some information for you related to, I'm going to be seeking your authorization again for the award of a contract and authorization for execution of documents and acquisition of computer hardware, software and services for high schools and related lease purchase financing. And so some information for you before I formally seek that approval.
All right, absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. So in a similar format, and also in February, I came and spoke to you about the high school laptop proposal refresh, and I want to share an update with you and also seek the, the contract award. So the high school laptop and infrastructure refresh request for proposal has finished contract review process with Henrico County Legal and also the, the awarded offers legal team. Today's brief update will review the request for proposal for the high school laptop and infrastructure refresh and seek your approval for award of the contract with the awarded In the prior update in February for the school board, the requirements of the laptop were shared for the laptop replacement. This is a quick review of those overarching requirements, and below is the general timeline that we followed of the process to date through today's request for a contract award. And you can see here some of the things we focused on, as shared before, was durable, functional, reliable, high-performing device for students and staff, repair and summer refresh services, which were critical, and having those baked in, along with the accidental damage coverage being included, so there's no dynamic cost. And to review, these are the key dates that were the proposed timeline in the statement of work with the awarded offer. Laptops will be available to high school students and staff in early to mid-August for the start of school, and each distribution at each school will be coordinated with the principal and their administration team. So here we actually have the device that was proposed by the awarded offer. The laptops in the Chromebooks presented were evaluated by each committee member to be durable, functional, reliable and high performing. It was critical and requested that all offers present laptop solutions that included the full warranty service, along with the accidental damage warranty coverage. This guaranteed that every student always had a device readily available for learning and that the division didn't incur those unknown costs. Of the devices considered, which included a Dell 3100 Chromebook and a Dell Latitude Education Model 3410 laptop, the Dell Latitude 5420 was selected, which is an exceptional high-performing business class laptop. And also included in this slide are some general specifics and pictures of the new laptop for high school staff and students. And you can see here in the, the community can see as well, some of the general specs for that device, which is a very high-end device. And this is what was recommended by the committee. Less than three pounds. So over the years, we've always received many requests for lighter devices. So this one is probably the lightest we've ever had, which is fantastic for the students. We were essentially doubling the RAM in the device, which is fantastic, and it's got the latest processor, too. So definitely a top-end device for staff and students. And here again, just to share and refresh is the evaluation criteria that were used by the RFP committee to evaluate the different devices and services offered by the offers. And you can see, as shared before, in February, a lot of the, the services and the qualifications with the firm are all weighted fairly equally. So we had a comprehensive solution across all the requirements. And here is the, the recommendation from the committee was Electronic Systems was the highest court offer per the evaluation criteria and more closely aligned with HCPS's requirements and the RFP. And ESI is a local company in Virginia. They're headquartered in Virginia Beach and their parent company is Xerox. So they actually are part of a very large company, which is good because they have some resilience as far as like, you know, staying around. And I will share, too, ESI has partnered with Henrico County Public Schools for over 15 years on different projects and efforts in the technology department, and they're also the awarded vendor supporting the elementary Chromebook deployment that we have. So we're very familiar with them and have a really good working relationship, which is important. All right. So the last, the recommendation of the committee is an award of contract to Electronic Systems Inc. for the Dell 5420 business class laptop for staff and students, including all related services during the lease term and including all high school-based server infrastructure as well, which is being refreshed under a four-year lease with annual payments of just over $5 million. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Consella.
I'm good. Thank you for the presentation.
Ms. Shea.
I'm okay.
Ms. Ogden.
I'm good.
Ms. Atkins.
No questions.
All right.
All right. Seeing no questions, I am asking that the school board award a contract in the amount of $20,171,540.52 to ESI, Electronic Systems Incorporated, for Dell laptop servers and implementation of services for high schools and other school board facilities. Authorize and approve lease purchase schedule number 810-6430544-014 through 810-6430544-026 to master lease agreement with Dell Financial Services LLC for a term of four years with annual payments of $5,42,800,000. annual payments of $5,42,885.13, and that you authorize the chair, superintendent, and county attorney and our other qualified attorney to execute all necessary and appropriate documents for the acquisition and financing, along with such document in a form approved by the county attorney.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Board members, is there a motion to award the contract?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Ogbon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the contract has been awarded.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Maddox, for your work on this. Our next presentation is an update on our energy management program. You'll note that Susan Moore is joined by a guest. We're happy to have Carrie Webster, the county's energy manager, with us. You'll get to hear from her in a minute, and we're pleased to have you join us and hear you on a marathon meeting day, so thank you for your patience. I know you've been with us for a while. So Susan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good afternoon or early evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Cashwell. Happy Earth Day. So today is Earth Day, which the theme for Earth Day this year is Restore Our Earth, which focuses on natural processes, emerging green technologies, and innovative thinking that can restore the world's ecosystems. We felt it would be the perfect time to review our energy management program, as well as our progress in utilizing solar energy. Today, I would like to introduce Carrie Webster, our energy manager for Henrico County and schools. Carrie provides valuable service to HCPS by providing energy evaluations on our buildings, working with Dominion to ensure we are on the best rate programs possible, helping get us involved in a demand response program, which helps us get energy rebates back, and helping us move into using solar energy, just to name a few of the items. With that, fortunately, John Neal was here, our director of general services for the county, but he did have to pick up his son from one of our schools. So with that, I will turn it over to Carrie to start our presentations.
Thank you so much, Susan. Good afternoon, Dr. Cashwell, Chairman Cooper, and members of the board. It's a pleasure to meet you. My name is Carrie Webster, and I've been with the county for about five years as your energy manager. And I specifically put this picture in there so you could see my whole face. My position is funded equally between schools, government, and public utilities, so I have the unique perspective of really being able to get a big picture of our county's energy use and see how that can be balanced. I am the primary point of contact for our major utility companies like Dominion and Richmond Gas. I work with them to try to get our facilities on the best possible rate schedules and save money that way, power outages, all kinds of things with electricity. And then I also represent Henrico on a number of energy industry groups. I serve on the board for VEPCA, which is actually how we contract with Dominion, as a joint powers association with all the other localities within Dominion's territory. And basically, my primary role is to track building energy use and look for ways to drive that down, not only to save costs, but to save resources. I support green building in our new construction efforts and trying to make sure that all of our capital projects start out as green, efficient, environmentally friendly buildings. I do public outreach, such as energy fairs, presentations to the public. And then I put this pyramid in here because it's important to think in these orders, the basis of an energy management program is thinking first about conservation. Conservation is simply using less energy, not wasting it, trying to set back wherever you can. Efficiency is the next tier, that is actually making changes to your buildings to save energy, like upgrading the lights or upgrading the HVAC. And then after that, you think about how we can add renewable energy to our projects. This is just an example of some of the energy tracking that I do. This is looking at the total county energy use, and I've run it through the calendar year, so it's as up-to-date as possible. There are a lot of ways that we save energy through things I mentioned, like efficiency projects and rate schedules, but this past year has been definitely an outlier. As you can see, we are saving a tremendous amount of energy this year. Compared to a typical year, we would look to maybe save 2% or 3% in our energy costs. Countywide, we're down about 13%, and the vast majority of that is in schools, and that is all due to the reduction in our building operations during the pandemic. But we were able to conserve energy during that time by looking at our building operations and setting back while those buildings weren't being used. So schools alone is down about $2 million in energy costs compared to last calendar I provide support for a number of efficiency projects all throughout the county, all kinds of buildings, libraries and fire stations and jails and schools. Virginia Randolph was actually a really fun project. That was a student-driven project where they upgraded their lights to LED. The tech center electricity program did that, and then I got involved and helped them calculate the energy savings from that project, how to extrapolate it to the whole school, how that extrapolates to the whole county, and also other benefits like improvement in the lighting quality. You can actually measure a difference in the light levels between old lights and new lights, and they can see the improvement in that learning environment. And then mainly, we're here to talk about our endeavors in solar energy. This is something that we have taken on in the past few years. It's gained a lot of momentum, and what we have been doing is using solar power purchase agreements. And this looks complicated, and basically, there are three entities here. Henrico County, we're the purchaser of the energy. We have contracted with a solar power purchase agreement provider, Sun Tribe Solar. They install solar systems on our buildings. They are responsible for designing them, installing them, and operating them for the life of the systems. We've been doing 25-year agreements with them. Our responsibility is to purchase that renewable energy from them over the term of our agreement. And the way we save money is the rate that we pay for that solar electricity is lower than the rate we pay Dominion per kilowatt hour. So we're actually able to get solar systems on our buildings with no upfront investment, and we save money in the long run. We still, of course, have our buildings connected to Dominion Utility Power to provide electricity at the times when the solar is not generating, like at night. We piloted this in 2019 with two government buildings. These were our first two rooftop solar projects at Libby Mill Library and our Mental Health East Center that's right down the street. We picked these buildings primarily because they have new roofs, and that is one of the key criteria to picking a building as a solar candidate. You definitely want a roof that's going to last for the life of the solar system, and you don't need to take those solar panels off to replace the roof. These were our first two projects, and the savings that is presented there is the 25-year lifetime estimated savings in electricity costs. And I'm going to talk at the end about how that's calculated. Since that was successful, we put out another RFP for four more projects. That included one government building, our public safety building, and three schools. And again, we looked at that criteria for public safety, just received a new roof, and the three schools were new buildings, and Susan's going to talk about how we selected those.
As Carrie indicated, our solar program began developing just as we were undertaking the design of our three new schools. We very quickly realized it was a natural fit and a logical decision to include them in round two of our solar contract. Knowing that we would be contracting solar for these schools, we worked with our design teams to make sure the schools were ready and able to receive the solar array system when it was installed. With each installation, there will be a dashboard located in each school to show students and staff how these solar installation systems are providing energy. The dashboard will also be available electronically for the schools to access as a part of instruction. It's anticipated that these systems will, on the high schools, the systems will provide approximately 40% to 50% of the school's electricity needs. As part of Henrico County's LEED requirement, each of these schools has been designed in accordance with the U.S. Green Building Council's LEED Rating Program. LEED stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. And the certification program is used worldwide to promote and authenticate safe, healthy, and sustainable design and construction of green buildings. The inclusion of the solar energy arrays will contribute significantly to achieving our LEED Silver Certification on each one of our three new schools. We're currently in the process of issuing a notice for C to Sun Tribe for the solar design at each school. However, due to our tight schedules for construction, the priority focus is to get these schools, the construction completed, and students and staff in the buildings in the fall. With that in mind, the actual installation of the solar arrays will occur after the building is open. As you can see, for a 25-year savings, we anticipate a little over $420,000 on each of the high schools, and a projected savings of $111,000 on the Brooklyn Area Elementary or the expansion of Holiday Elementary. Carrie's going to continue and talk about round three.
And now we're proposing to move forward with another round of solar projects. This proposed round three includes two government buildings, the new Fairfield Area Library and the Recreation and Parks Main Office on Staples Mill Road that received a new roof last year. And there are five new school projects proposed.
So in looking at what schools would be ready and capable, or existing buildings to receive the solar, we have these five schools included in round three. Glen Allen High School, Harvey Elementary, Holman Middle, Cackley Elementary, and Colonial Trail Elementary. And as Carrie indicated, the age of the roofing systems is what is a very significant factor in being able to put these systems on the roofs. The review looked at multiple considerations, such as building energy use, roof types and ages, landscaping and tree coverage, and building orientations for receiving the solar rays of the sun. It was determined that these five schools are the most appropriate candidates for this next round. Like round two, we'll have dashboards in these schools, so the students can learn about the solar technology and what it can do for our energy consumption. Excuse me. As the program continues, we'll continue to evaluate our schools and see what additional schools can be included in the program, along with looking at when we would do roof replacements, which would make a school come to the forefront of being able to be included.
This just sums up the anticipated savings from all of our rounds of solar projects, including this proposed round three. The way these are calculated, hopefully this graphic might help explain, we receive a price per kilowatt hour from our solar provider at which we purchase the solar electricity over a 25-year period. That rate, to date, all of our projects, that rate has started lower than our per kilowatt hour price we pay for Dominion electricity. So we're already saving from the very beginning. And we also negotiate an escalator with the solar company, and for this round, that escalator is going to be 1%. So every year, the solar PPA rate will escalate at 1%. However, that actually increases the savings over time because the average rate of utility escalation is 2.5%. So over time, we save right away, and over time, we save more and more as the escalation of grid electricity outpaces the escalation of our solar electricity rate. So altogether, all three of these rounds are projected to save about $4 million in the 25-year term of these solar agreements, and that is with no upfront capital cost. Not only that, it reduces the carbon footprint of our buildings by providing renewable energy, which is a better source of energy than grid electricity. So that is all for the solar. I just wanted to include a little plug that today is Earth Day, and we are actually having an Earth Day celebration this weekend. It'll be distributed between three locations, so we can spread out, Deep Run Park, the Armor House, and the Academy at Virginia Randolph. And Virginia Randolph is going to display all of their CTE programs. That was actually one of the first, the first Arbor Day celebration in Virginia was organized by Ms. Randolph. At that location, there were 12 sycamore trees planted that are still there on the grounds, so it's a really interesting historical story that ties to that particular site. So they're excited to show that off this weekend. But if you can't make it, I did bring some gift bags for you that are insulated lunchboxes from the energy management program, so you'll get a goodie bag either way. That's all, and we're happy to take your questions.
Well, thank you so much. I just want to say before I open the floor to my colleagues, what a great and timely presentation, given that we are celebrating Earth Day today, which we should celebrate every day. And so I want to thank you for your diligence and your dedication and doing this work, and excited about the four million dollar savings and the reduction in our carbon footprint. So I'm going to go to my left, Ms. Atkins.
Thank you for the presentation and goodie bag. I'm sure I will enjoy that. I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Madam Ms. Ogbon.
Thank you. I'll just be real quick. I am, the most exciting part about this to me, other than, you know, the obvious, it is certainly good for our planet, I have a number of constituents who are very interested in these projects, so this will be good news to them, but I'm glad there's going to be a learning component for our kids. It looks like, to me, that's that golden opportunity of a learning moment, and we're taking advantage of that. Obviously, this affects a number of my schools, and I've had a lot of constituent contact about it, so I'm glad it's going forward. I'm excited to see it, and when it comes to be, and we'll have to log a tour and get a look at it, would be awesome, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Ms. Shea.
Thank you. I really appreciate the clarity that there's no upfront capital investment, because that's what, my questions were all around, so you've already answered it. And I'll just share that I wish those were yearly savings and not 25-year savings, but I'll take it where I can get it.
Thank you, Madam. Mrs. Cancela?
Yeah, this is just a question, wondering why the, just the difference in savings that's projected seems, is so much greater at Glen Allen High School versus Tucker? I want to say, unless I saw, unless I didn't get what the slides were saying.
I think probably, and I'll let Carrie speak more onto that, I would imagine that has to do with what the current energy consumption of Glen Allen High School is. Glen Allen is 10 years old. Our new high schools will be LED throughout. There's a lot of energy savings that are already incorporated into the new high school designs, so my guess is that's probably where we see the differential.
I want to say it was like 422 with Tucker, and then maybe 7 something with Glen Allen. No, it makes perfect sense. I just thought I'd ask.
Glen Allen is $398,000 a year for 25 years, as opposed to Tucker and Highland Springs are in the $420,000.
Okay.
So they are close, but slightly different, they'll have slightly different starting rates because they're in two different rounds and slightly different.
The savings, though, are over 25 years, so.
Yes.
Okay.
The arrays also may be different slightly depending on the building orientation, so you won't necessarily see the exact same solar panel arrangement on each of the buildings, and that will be due to how they sit on the site.
Yeah, as they're turned differently on each site and different areas face south, they have to design the systems to receive south-facing sunlight.
I agree with my colleagues. This presentation was so relevant on so many levels on this particular day, so thank you, and thank you for the gift bag.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Cancela. Madam Superintendent?
All right. I echo my thanks for the presentation. Carrie and Susan, outstanding work on this. Really appreciated the overview, and it flows right into my next item, which is for my seeking the board's approval of five solar power purchase projects with Sun Tribe Solar LLC for the installation of solar power systems at Glen Allen High School, Holman Middle School, Harvey Elementary, Cackley Elementary, and Colonial Trail Elementary.
Is there a motion to award the contract? Is there motion to approve the solar power purchase projects?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Ogden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the project, projects have been approved.
Thank you. All right. For the next item, I am asking that the School Board approve the right-of-way agreement between the County School Board of Henrico County, Virginia, and Virginia Electric and Power Company, our Dominion Energy Virginia, for the Highland Springs High School Replacement Project.
Is there motion to approve the right-of-way agreement for Highland Springs High School Replacement Project?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cancela. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the agreement has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. The next item, I'm requesting the School Board approve a proposal from Finley Asphalt and Ceiling Incorporated in the amount of $117,440 for pavement improvements to the main parking area at Glen Allen Elementary School.
Is there motion to approve the proposal for pavement improvements at Glen Allen Elementary School?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Cancela. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Shea. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
If not, opposed, the ayes have it, the proposal has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. We are nearing the end here. The final items are consent items, which means that they can be taken in a block. And so, I am seeking your acceptance of the monthly financial statement and budgetary status report for the month ending March 31, 2021, acceptance of the monthly financial statement for school nutrition services operation for the month ending March 31, 2021, approval of personnel items, approval of authorization signature in the absence of the superintendent.
Is there motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cancela. All in favor say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, the consent items have been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. That concludes items from the superintendent.
Thank you so much, Madam Superintendent. The next item on our agenda is our public forum. A total of four citizens have signed up in advance to address Board members. Citizens have signed up in advance, and speakers will be given two minutes to address the School Board. We will follow the sign-up list, and the Board will not hear from speakers who have not signed up in advance. Those who have signed up to speak may not relinquish their spot to someone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and neighborhood or school affiliation. To assist you in tracking your time, there is a timekeeping system on the platform and the stage. Speakers will have a two-minute time limit. The light will be green as you begin your remarks. The yellow light means you have one minute remaining, and we ask that you please stop speaking when the light turns red. The School Board is here today to hear from you, the community. Speakers should speak directly to the Board. We will not be responding to speakers. And as always, we appreciate your attendance here this afternoon and for providing us with your input. First speaker is Izmat Khan. Is Izmat Khan here? The second speaker is Jack Lacy. Is Jack Lacy here? The third speaker is Dresha Mishra. Are you present? And the fourth is McKinley Sutton. Are you present? Thank you so much. That being said, our next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Is there motion to approve the following minutes? March 10, 2021, special meeting. March 10, 2021, governance training. March 11, 2021, work session. March 17, 2021, legislative budget review. March 19, 2021, governance training. And last but not least, March 25, 2021, work session.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogden. What was that? Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same right. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is unfinished business. Board members, is there any unfinished business? Next item on the agenda is the naming of Quayacason Middle School. I will relinquish it to Mrs. Shea.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper, and I thank my colleagues and those in attendance for a few minutes of your time to provide context to this, even on the heels of a very long meeting. In the last month, our school division has lost a significant number of students, particularly in the last month. Each of these losses are great and have created ripples of grief in our communities. Each community has come together in different ways to support each other, process grief, and begin to heal. In my district, Lucia Bramer, a student at Quayacason Middle School, was murdered last month. As a part of the community's grief processing and healing, they have requested to name the Quayacason Middle School soccer field in memory of her. I have received dozens of letters of support from staff, parents, and students in my community. While I had the pleasure of knowing Lucia and her family personally, the words of our community are more important than mine. The remainder of my remarks tonight are taken from the letters submitted to me in support of the naming. A school counselor shares, "Creating memorials and honoring the ones we have lost is an integral step in the grieving process. So much has been student and community-led as we move through this process. It felt very organic, which includes this effort. We cannot change the things that have happened, but we can certainly honor, love, and remember one of Quayacason's most precious gifts." A classmate shares, "Lucia was one of the best soccer players I knew. Lucia always gave her hardest on the field and in the classroom and really demonstrated determination. She always gave her best and left it all on the field. I feel like these qualities are important for everyone to have in order to succeed in life." From a parent, "Lucia was the kid you hoped your children to be friends with. She was indefinitely positive, brave, and of the utmost character. She was the friend that you'd always want in your corner, never afraid to stand up for what's right. She defended what, or she defined what friendship should be about." A teacher, "When I met Lucia, I immediately knew she was special. I could tell that many students looked up to her as someone to emulate. She had an ever-expanding circle of friends, as she never looked down on anyone and saw the good in everyone. There was nothing Lucia could not accomplish because of her commitment to whatever she set her mind to." Another, "Lucia exemplified love, joy, kindness, and good sportsmanship." More, "When I drive by the soccer field and I see the green ribbons, I always see her, and I will be sad to see those ribbons disappear. Lucia was a role model in academics, sports, and social life. I believe her name needs to stand strong for other Quayacason students to look up to, hear the wonderful stories about. There is no way better to keep a name alive than to name something after them to memorialize them." Finally, "Having her legacy as a part of the student body and soccer program commemorated in this way would perpetuate her life and light for future generations at the school. It would likewise serve to underscore the type of student athletes the school hopes to develop, namely those who practice hard, study diligently, and love deeply. Colleagues, I could go on for hours, reading heartfelt accounts of Lucia's character, contributions to the school, and enduring impact on the community shared in dozens of letters written. But I will sum it up with the words of her principal, Melanie Phipps. Our community is grieving and needs a way to continue to remember and celebrate the legacy of Lucia. As a principal, I am proud of how this community has come together to support one another. And as a leader of this community, I stand behind the effort to name the Quayacason Middle School Athletic Field, the Lucia Bramer Memorial Field, as a lasting tribute to a student who shined and touched the lives of so many. Colleagues, hearing this, I make a motion to waive the notice period for naming a school facility."
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea, for your impassioned and emotional rendering of thoughts of Lucia, and I know I speak for colleagues when I say that. Our hearts go out to her family and all the families of all of our students who have been lost, unfortunately, to tragic loss. So, I will second your motion. Well, I can't second it. Thank you. Is there a second to her motion? Been seconded by Mrs. Atkins, has been moved by Mrs. Shea, and seconded by Ms. Atkins. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and we have passed your motion.
Colleagues, having waived the notice period, I make the motion to name the soccer field at Quayacason Middle School, the Lucia Bramer Memorial Field.
Is there a second to Ms. Shea's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cancela. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you again, Ms. Shea. Any additional new business? Having hearing none, let me just make a final announcement. I want to announce our meeting dates. The School Board's next meeting will be a work session scheduled on Thursday, May 13, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. in the New Bridge Learning Center Auditorium. The meeting time may be adjusted if needing, needed. This meeting is adjourned.